Good evening, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Southfield City Council, October 27th. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Banks.
Present.
Councilwoman Brightwell.
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes.
Present.
Councilwoman Proten Hicks.
Here.
Councilwoman Hoag.
Here.
Council President Mandelbaum.
Present.
We have a call.
All right, if everyone can please rise for the colored card. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. While everyone is still standing, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Our council colleague, Dr. Lloyd Cruz, passed away last week. He was a councilman for ten years, and I'd like to ask for a moment of silence. Thank you. You may be seated. We'd like to remind everyone to please silence your cellphones. I'd like to now call up our fire chief, Joey Thorington. We have badge pinning and swearing in of some new Southfield officers, and the city of Southfield is always very appreciative and supportive of all of our public safety officers. We recently purchased some new trucks and ambulances and equipment, which we seem to do quite often, but it's much needed to help them do their job. So with that, Chief Thorington.
May we thank you for that. All right. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, City Administrator, and guests. It's an honor to stand here today as we celebrate one of the most meaningful milestones in a firefighter's career: the promotion to Battalion Chief. This badge represents far more than a new rank or title. It represents years of hard work, dedication, sacrifice, and steadfast commitment to the men and women of this department and the community we serve. It also represents leadership, the kind that earnings trust not through words but through consistent action, integrity, and accountability. Tim Miller has demonstrated these qualities time and again. Whether on the fire ground, in the station, or working behind the scenes to make this department stronger, he's led by example and inspired others to do the same. As a Battalion Chief, Tim now takes on the responsibility of shaping the next generation of firefighters: guiding, mentoring, and ensuring these crews, our crews, go home safe after every call. It's a tremendous responsibility, but one that he is well-prepared for. To Tim's family, we thank you for your patience, your support, and understanding through all the long nights, the missed holidays, the early mornings. Your sacrifices make today possible. And to Tim, congratulations on this well-deserved promotion. You have earned the respect and confidence of your peers, and we're proud to see you take this next step in your career. At this time, I'd like to invite Tim and his wife Jen forward for the badge pinning, We'd also like to celebrate an important milestone in the careers of our newest firefighters. It's one of the proudest traditions in the fire service. It represents not only the completion of probation, but also the trust and responsibility that comes with wearing the Southfield Fire Department badge. To our new firefighters, today marks the end of one chapter and the beginning of another. Over the past year, you've been tested. You've been asked to learn, adapt, and perform under pressure. You face sleepless nights, countless drills, and physical and mental demands that come with this profession. You've had to prove yourself not just to your officers, but also your fellow firefighters, the ones who will count on you when the tones drop. This badge is more than a piece of metal. It symbolizes commitment, sacrifice, and service. It's a reminder that every time you put it on, you carry the weight of the department's reputation and the trust of the community we serve. To our families here today, we thank you as well. Your support has made this possible. Behind every firefighter is a family that sacrifices just as much. Holidays missed, family events missed, nights spent worrying, and day-to-day challenges that comes with this career. We couldn't do it without you. To our new firefighters, wear this badge of pride. Remember the lessons you've learned on probation because they will carry with you the rest of your career. Continue to train. Continue to push yourselves. Never forget why you chose this calling: to serve others in the greatest time of need. Congratulations on reaching this milestone. You've earned your place in the Southfield Fire Department. May you have a safe, long, and fulfilling career. At this time, I'd like to invite firefighter paramedic Williams and his brother Samad, and You want us to swear amen? Okay. All right.
I do swear in the interest of the public. Congratulations today. If you raise your right hand, the P F A can say the title of the office that you lead in your role for the Southfield Fire Department. I do solemnly swear or pardon that I would support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that I would faithfully perform the duties of the Office of Police and General and the Southfield Fire Department, and the District of Southfield, the Challenge, and for the City of Southfield, the County of Oakland, and the State of Michigan. According to the best of my ability. Say your name. All right. Support and subscribe as sworn to me this date, October 27, 2025.
While we're taking care of the paperwork, I just want to give a special shout-out to the families of these firefighters and firefighter paramedics for giving us the opportunity and allowing them to work and put theirself in danger every day and helping to protect the citizens of Southfield. I'd like, if the families can please stand up, and we can give you a round of applause.[687.13][687.13](APPLAUSE). We will do our best to make sure they come home every day. Thank you. All right, we'll have you come around and...
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Sir. Congratulations, ladies and gentlemen. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate it. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome.
And that concludes our ceremony. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief. All right, next, we have a number of appointments, and I'll ask our mayor to step up to the podium.
Good evening, Council. I'm going to take these appointments in two sections. First, the appointments, and then the reappointments. So I'd like to ask that the following people come forward: Labib Ansara, Charles Woodward, Diane Brookins, Adrian Douglas, and Fallon Levin. So this evening, we have a number of residents and businesspeople that have stepped up to fill some vacancies on our various boards and commissions. So I'm asking Council for the approval of the appointment to Labib Ansara, who is a businessman in the DDA, to be appointed to the vacancy on the Downtown Development Authority Board. And then our historic district advisory board and district commission, we don't call them into service very often, and so the terms of the people on those boards have expired. We also have a vacancy. So I'm asking, as required by our city ordinance, that our leading building official, Charles Woodward, be appointed to the Historic District Advisory Board. And then to the Historic District Commission, Diane Brookins. And then Adrian Douglas to a vacancy on the Southfield Public Arts Commission. And then to a vacancy on the Parks and Rec Commission, Fallon Levin. So with that introduction, I'm looking for a motion to approve.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the appointments as identified by the mayor.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, for the five appointments as described. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, Council. Now I'll turn it over to the city clerk.
What we do is we'll introduce the oath once, or into the name of your specific committee of commission, and then say your name. So please, raise your right hand. And the P F A, I do solemnly swear or pardon that I would support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Michigan, and the City Charter of the City of Southfield, and that I would faithfully perform the duties of the Historic District Advisory Board, the Historic District Commission, the Public Arts Commission, and the Southfield Parks and Recreation Board. Please say your name. And the Downtown Development Authority. Please say your name. Okay, one at a time. We could do better than that. Say your name. Go ahead.
Labib Ansara.
Now Labib.
Adrian Douglas.
Diane Brookins.
Thank you. According in the city and for the City of Southfield, County of Oakland, and the State of Michigan, according to the best of my ability, subscribe as sworn to me before me this date, October 27, 2025. Be ready.
While we're waiting for the formalities here, I'd like to call up, if they're present, these are simply reappointments, so I'm not sure that all of them are here. But once again, we have some issues that have arisen. One of our synagogues, Brother Sharazettic, is seeking historic designation, has to start at the local level, then go to the state, and then Department of Interior. So we need to call that board together. And we have another issue regarding a Southfield historic structure that someone wants to alter. So if any of the following people are here, Rosemary Allen, Darla Van Hoi, Dale Guyer, Corey Moffett, Barbara Macbeth, Patricia McLemore, Mary Lewis, and then Darla serves on both bodies as the president of the Southfield Historical Society.
All right. But, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask if your appointments can hold off. We'll shake everyone's hand altogether at the end.
Sure.
So once you're done with your paperwork, if you can...
We have a big agenda, so I'm trying to...
I understand.
You can stay, and the council would like to shake your hand, so don't run off.
But council, I'll still entertain a motion while we're...
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I move that we approve the reappointments to the Historic District as identified by the mayor.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, for the reappointments as the mayor described. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
So present this evening is, I think both, all of you know, these two women who have been superb volunteers in our city. Darla Van Hoi, president of the Southfield Historical Society, and Pat McLemore, or Patricia McLemore, president of the Southfield Parks and Garden Club. Both of these women work in tandem between the library, the historical society, Parks and Garden, and they're being asked to serve one more time. So, are you doing the oath for these folks or not?
I'm not for these folks.
Okay, okay. So anyhow, you've been approved for reappointment, so the council would like to acknowledge you. So thank you for stepping up again. Andrew. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Thank you. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. 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 Thank you.
All right. Next is a presentation on Extra Mile Day.
So I would like to ask that Margaret Hall and Willie Bell come forward, please. As I've done every year, there is a national, November 1st each year across the United States is set aside as Extra Mile Day, and every year I have recognized people in our community that have served above and beyond in their volunteerism. So we have a mayor's proclamation this evening, whereas Southfield, Michigan is a community which encourages its citizens to maximize their personal contribution to the community by giving of themselves wholeheartedly and with total effort, commitment, and conviction to their individual ambitions, family, friends, and community. And whereas, through various efforts to support the community, such as the Big Rake, Friends of Southfield Public Arts, domestic violence prevention groups, family assistance programs, Dr. Martin Luther King Peace Walk, and so on and so forth, Southfield is a community that chooses to shine a light on those individuals that give themselves and go the extra mile. The 2025 honorees demonstrate that one person can make a difference, to bring about positive change, and improve the quality of life for the Southfield community at large. And whereas, Southfield, Michigan, is a community which chooses to shine a light on and celebrate individuals and organizations within the community that go the extra mile in order to make a difference and lift up fellow members of their community. So whereas, Southfield salutes 2025 Extra Mile Honoree, come on over, Margaret Hall.[1472.25][1472.25](APPLAUSE). And who is a survivor of domestic violence and recognized the need for energetic, energetic nonprofit work in the area of domestic violence. In 2006, Margaret organized the Southfield Domestic Violence Group and started to provide sensible solutions to help people. The nonprofit has consistently grown since then, all thanks to Margaret and the helping hands of the Southfield Domestic Violence Group. This group partners with the city of Southfield to provide resources and support to individuals and families experiencing domestic violence. Since 2020, the Domestic Violence Group has been one of the organizers, rather, of our annual walk to bring awareness to domestic violence. Margaret also is a participant in our holiday gift-giving program with the police department. And the gentleman to my right, Willie Bell, is, Southfield salutes him as well as an Extra Mile Honoree for 2025. Mr. Bell is the founder and CEO of Family Assistance for Renaissance Men, also known as FARM, a nonprofit organization founded in 2014 and designed to help fathers get back on track with their children and helps men willing to turn their life around. FARM has helped more than 3,500 families, including fathers, mothers, children, to rehabilitate their lives. Mr. Bell has been a resident of Southfield for 26 years and is an active participant in the annual domestic violence walk. So for both of these individuals, I wanted to recognize them tonight. I present Ms. Hall with a proclamation, and Mr. Bell, the same.[1601.33][1601.33](APPLAUSE).
I want to say thank you for this opportunity. You never know where your life's going to go and what God's plans are for you. If someone had told me when I was finishing college that this is where I would be, I would have told them they were absolutely wrong. But out of my situation came my passion for domestic violence prevention and awareness, and I'm so involved with this that I don't know what I would be doing if I wasn't doing this. But I know that Southfield is where I've had this place, in my heart and the compassion that I feel for this. This is what I love to do, and I thank you for honoring me tonight.[1645.86][1645.86](APPLAUSE).
Thank you so much, Mayor, City Council, for your support and your love and just for your partnership and the work we do and live here for in the city of Southfield. So I appreciate you all. Just like Ms. Hall said, out of her passion and out of her experience became the domestic violence awareness work that she does and we do with her. But mine was a little different. I didn't have a father in my life, and so because I didn't have a father in my life, I got it wrong. And I ran up, you know, out in the city of Detroit, trying to figure out how to be a man, and because of getting it wrong, and next thing you know, I found church right down the street here in Southfield at Word of Faith, and because of the principles I learned there, my life turned around. And once my life turned around, I heard the man upstairs tell me, now that I've blessed you and showed you how to be a better man, a better father, now I want you to write a program to help other men out there and other families turn their lives around. And so I'm honored to be honored today for the work we do, but there's many others behind me that support the work we're doing, right along with the police chief and the Chief Justice, Sheila Johnson, as well. So thank you very much. God bless you all, and I appreciate it. Thank you, God.[1733.13][1733.13](APPLAUSE).
All right, thank you. Next, we have a presentation by the Southfield Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to introduce Jasmine Patton, the director of the Southfield Chamber of Commerce. For the past 19 years, I've had the opportunity to collaborate with the chamber on numerous initiatives, including the privilege of serving on the board, all dedicated to advancing the Southfield's business growth and vitality. While our paths have evolved, our mission remains shared to strengthen and connect Southfield's business community. As we celebrate National Chamber Month, we look forward to hearing about the chamber's exciting new initiatives and meeting the many talented staff members that have recently joined Jasmine's team.
Jasmine, there's the clicker.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city leadership. I am Jasmine Patton, the executive director for the Southfield Chamber. As many of you know, I've been with the chamber. As many of you know, I've been with the chamber almost seven years through growth, crisis, and recovery. The chamber remains the connector, advocate, and driving force for Southfield's business success. I believe that when our businesses thrive, our community thrives. I'm here today to ensure that the collaboration that we have continues to prosper and to introduce the changes that are taking place at the Southfield Chamber. I'd like to introduce new members of our team. I'll just ask her to come up. Marcia is our Director of Community Engagement. Marcia connects nonprofits, civil leaders, and businesses. Her work strengthens our partnerships, and she helps to make Southfield a model for collaboration. Latoya Early. Latoya is our Director of Member Services. She's been with us over two years. She is focused on the value of our members. She helps to connect local businesses to resources, growth opportunities, and to one another. Latoya's passions keeps our members engaged and supported. Lois Dent is our new Director of Sponsorship. Lois has deep experience in building partnerships statewide, and she ensures her sponsorship strengthens our chamber mission while empowering entrepreneurs. Lois's leadership fuels much of our financial sustainability and event success. And the newest member to our team, Carol Jackson. Carol Jackson is the new Director of Government Affairs. She bridges the gap between business and government, and she helps to ensure that community voices are heard and that their policy decisions reflect diverse perspectives. Carol's work reinforces our shared mission and informed and engaged Southfield involvement. Our chamber mission is very simple. We desire to have a thriving business community that strengthens the local economy and enhances quality of life. We desire to serve as a catalyst in connecting businesses and opportunities for advocacy and for growth. We're guided by our core values of promises kept, relationships built, passion, excellence, and forward thinking. And these principles drive everything that we do collectively together. There are three core committees that have started this year that have enhanced. The nonprofit committee supports collaboration among mission-based organizations. Our new Economic Development Committee partners with leaders and investors to strengthen the business climate. And our newest committee, the Small Business Council. There are also members of that committee present. I'd like for them to stand. In 2025, we hosted 130 events. We have 330 members, and we've seen increased engagement with over 1,150 event attendees. We've expanded our programs and built stronger partnerships locally and regionally, and every initiative has been focused on creating opportunity and connection. In 2026, we are focused on four pillars: professional development, business support services, networking, and youth leadership. One of the newest focuses, youth leadership. Our goal and our desire is to make sure that we support all entrepreneurs, including youth. We feel that this is an area that we can collaborate in and focus on in the upcoming year. Our upcoming events include a business bowling bash on October 30th, a Vitality Gala Award for businesses on November 12th, our trusted connector kickoff in partnership with the Great Lakes Women's Business Council on November 19th, and concluding with our Small Business Saturday Social on November 29th. In closing and recognizing national support your local chamber day, I'd like to close with three asks. The chamber respectfully requests the city maintain its membership and good standing and continue to support the Chamber of Commerce here locally. We also request two upcoming meetings. One in mid-November to discuss our new initiative, a program called City Connect. This program is to enhance in collaboration the new city-led ribbon cuttings. And another meeting in May of 2026, we'd like to provide an update of our partnership and community impact during National Small Business Week. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions for Ms. Patton?
No questions, but just to say I'm looking forward to that meeting and how we can collaborate together more inclusively, you know, work together, we need each other. So I'm looking forward to that. Welcome to the new members of the chamber. And let's get together and make sure we work together. We're here to support.
Thank you.
Councilman Hicks?
Thank you, Ms. Patton, for your presentation. Having a strong chamber and city relationship is important. Are there things that we can do to complement your current vision and mission?
I believe if we have more frequent communication, that would be imperative to help streamline not only the work that we're doing, but the work that's taking place at the city as well. We want to be of support, and we'd like to hear feedback in regards to how we can support the initiatives that you have more. We also want to make sure that we are amplifying the ribbon cuttings that are taking place in the community, regardless of who's leading that ribbon cutting. We want to make sure there's a strong presence and that we're sharing that news because we have several people who reach out to us for that information, and we've had that partnership in the past. And we'd like to continue to do that, even if it has changed.
Are we currently, what are we listed as? A partner, a colleague? What's our actual official?
You're a partner and also a member. So that's something that we like to strengthen and make sure that you have a continued membership and also that we are acknowledging our partnership as it continues to grow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Brightwell?
I think Mr. Hicks asked the same question that I was going to ask, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Appreciate you coming here. I just want to give a special shout out to Lois. We used to work together. So we appreciate that you're now joining the chamber and hope to collaborate with you on many projects. All right, I'll ask, is Ms. Freeman? Do you have any other last comments?
I'd like to finally conclude with just making sure that I acknowledge the chamber members that are here present in support of National Chamber Day. If you're a chamber member, can you please stand? Thank you, City Council, Mayor.
All right, we have one more comment from.
Yes, I just want to say thank you for coming. And also want to acknowledge one of our specific chamber members who we talked about some time ago, Mr. Ray Molden. If you would still continue to stand. Mr. Molden is a business owner who moved his business to the city of Southfield 10 years ago. And he is also one of the 100 outstanding men that was celebrated back in June. And I think you weren't here when we announced that. But congratulations to you again. Just wanted to acknowledge that. And his wife is also the president of the National Association of Women Business Owners. So thank you to you and your wife, and congratulations.
Thank you. Next, we have a presentation from Cable 15.
Good evening, Council. Cable 15 Technical Services and Parks and Recreation have partnered to create a live cam that shows the Great Lawn and the Promenade, as you can see here. The code to the left will take you right to it. So if anyone is watching this, they can stop the screen, click on that, and they will take you right to the YouTube channel that shows this. This live cam has proven to be amazingly popular. The first month, we've had 3,000 views. And of those, 36 people have joined our cable channel in general to watch other things in addition to this. Ironically, last month, people spent more time watching the live cam than they did watching all of our shows. I know. I think that's because it's such a beautiful view that people bring it up on one of their monitors and just leave it there all day because it really does look great. Our next step for the live cam is to put an information feed at the bottom. So we're updating people as they're viewing the live feed. And eventually, we would like to add a second live cam at the dog park, at our new dog park. We think people just love to watch that. So that's something else we're working on with tech services and parks services, or Parks and Recreation, again. But that's not our only project. Our next project is the digitization of any film, photo, or slide that involves the city of Southfield in any way. Anyone has it at home, their business, bring it in. We will digitize it. We will give you a cleaned up copy and the original back. And all you have to do is let us use your slide on Cable 15 or your video. That photo is from the Berg, when that was the Southfield Township Offices, and before there was OSHA. So, please, 248-796-4507, or cable15listens@cityofsouthfield.com. And I'd like to mention that both of these projects were initiated and virtually all the work was done by producer-director Gary Watts. In addition to the normal work he does, he came up with both these ideas. He fleshed them out. He worked with the other departments. And both, I think the first one already is a hit, and I hope the second one will be also. I've already seen some of the videos that he's restored for people, and it's great to see evergreen when it was a two-lane road, dirt road in some areas. It was really interesting, so I'm looking forward to that. So please, get in touch with us. We'll help you out.
Council, do you have any questions?
Thank you.
I have the next one, too.
All right. And then your next one is about Southfield Solutions.
Okay, Southfield Solutions is the online program for sharing concerns and requests for service with the city of Southfield. One of the challenges of requesting assistance is people don't always know where to send their request to. They're not always intuitive. For instance, in most cities, the police department handles parking. But here, code enforcement handles most parking violations. The great thing is with Southfield Solutions is you don't have to know what department you want to talk to. It's already programmed into the app. So you find the, you find the request, you input it, and it goes to the correct people. You can enter your request anonymously from the homepage of cityofsouthfield.com. There is a link at the bottom. But a much better way to do it is through the app. It's available on Android and Apple. This is the Android version here. Click on Report Issue. Select from the categories. And don't worry, even if you happen to pick the wrong category, each one of those has several subcategories for specific requests. Even if you pick the wrong category, it's not an issue because we automatically can send it to other departments or to the correct category. And if we get enough miscategorized requests, we amend the app to make it easier to use. So it's sort of a learning process for us. Once you pick your request category, use your phone's GPS to identify it or type in the GPS or the address if you're not there at the problem. But it's really convenient this way. Enter any comments you'd like to add. Take a photo of the problem or pick from your gallery if you've already taken a photo, and submit. That's it. You'll be updated as the process moves along. This is so convenient that even though I work here, I see all the department heads. When I'm out in the city in weekends or evenings, I just grab the app, take the picture, and submit it. It's really handy, and it helps us out because there's no chance of someone, oh, I missed the voicemail or I left a note for someone and he didn't get it. No, it's in the app. It tracks it. Someone calls and says, whatever happened? Or they look on the app, and we can tell them. So please, use it. We have a lot of positive comments. People like it. And it's funny, you can tell when a new Southfield Solutions user comes online because all of a sudden, you get a string of issues in their area, in their neighborhood, especially if they're people that like to walk. So you can, you can almost track users that way as the requests pile in from new people. But anyway, send us your photos. Look at our live cam and use Southfield Solutions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions on that? Councilman Banks?
If someone uses the Southfield Solution app, when the problem is resolved, are they then notified this complaint or resolution has been closed?
That's an option. If they want that, they get that. They can get that as a text, or they can get that in the app or email, yes.
So you have to request to.
You have the option of turning that feature on or off.
Turn it on or turn it off?
There's, I think there's a box.
Okay.
If you want to be notified. Some people don't. Most people do.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Great programs.
Thank you very much, John. Appreciate that. Right now, up to our communications portion of our meeting. The Southfield City Council has established the following rules of procedure for all speakers. Each speaker will have three minutes to address the council. Each speaker is responsible for his or her comments, and the city of Southfield does not, by permitting such remarks, support, endorse, or accept the content thereof as being true or accurate. No speaker may make personal or impertinent attacks upon any officer, employee, or city council member or other elected official that is unrelated to the manner in which they perform their duties. No person shall use abusive or threatening language towards any individual when addressing the city council. Any person who violates this section shall be directed by the presiding officer to be orderly and silent. If a person addressing the council refuses to become silent when so directed, such person may be deemed by the presiding officer to have committed a breach of the peace by disrupting and impeding the orderly conduct of the public meeting of the city council and may be ordered by the presiding officer to leave the meeting. If the person refuses to leave as directed, the presiding officer may direct any law enforcement officer who is present to escort the violator from the meeting. The council may not provide responses to public comment during the meeting. If you have provided your contact information when you sign up for public communications, the city will provide a more formal response to you in the near future, should it be needed. The council may respond to comments at the end of communications if they are able to do so. At our last meeting, several speaker used their allotted time to campaign. I want to remind everyone that campaigning during public comment is not permitted. If that occurs, the speaker may be stopped, and the remainder of their time may be forfeited. We value and welcome public participation, but we ask that everyone respect the purpose of this forum and follow the established rules of conduct so our meetings can remain fair, orderly, and productive. I'd also like to take a moment to clarify a few. I'd also like to take a moment to clarify a few procedural points from our last meeting. We fully encourage public engagement, and it's expected that speakers may share both praise and criticism about how we do our job, that's part of serving in public office. However, when comments become personal or unrelated to city business, it's appropriate for the chair to pause the speaker and bring the discussion back within the bounds of our meeting rules. This isn't about silencing anyone, it's about keeping our meetings respectful, focused, and fair to everyone who wishes to speak. Let's also keep in mind that we operate under council rules of procedure, Roberts Rules of Order, and the Michigan Open Meetings Act. If you believe a rule has been overlooked, and the chair has not yet acted, for the council, please call for a point of order and wait to be recognized before speaking. As public officials, we understand that greater visibility brings greater scrutiny, and that's part of the responsibility we've all accepted, and that we may be criticized by speakers and may not like it, but they have that right. But by staying professional, patient, and consistent in how we conduct our meetings, we set the standard for the respect we expect in return.
Mr. Chair, I'm wondering if, before you call speakers up this evening, if we might take a moment to, because at the last televised meeting, we had a number of people here regarding gun and ammunition sales near two childcare centers on 12 Mile Road. That issue has been resolved. The gun store has declined to stay there, and they've moved back to their original location, and the sign that was part of the, in front of the store, has been removed, so there will be no gun shop on 12 Mile Road, as we do have, and we continue to have a moratorium in place. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, our first speaker is Sia Morris. Sia Morris? Okay. Our next speaker is Kemi Mitchell.
Hello, and I want to thank each of you for giving me the time to speak today. My name is Kemi Mitchell, and I am a Southfield resident, and I serve on the chapter of, I serve as the president of the Michigan Chapter of Gift of Adoption. Gift of Adoption is a national charity that raises money to provide grants to complete the adoptions of children. As a whole, nationally, we have raised over $22 million, and have helped to complete the adoptions of over 6,700 children. Our Michigan Chapter has raised over, has raised over $600,000, and we have provided grants to help over 195 children in Michigan. I'm coming for you today just to bring awareness about Gift of Adoption, and to talk a little bit about our fundraising. November is National Adoption Month, and our largest fundraiser that we do to provide grants to children in Michigan is right here in Southfield. On Saturday, November 8th, we do Stepping Up for Adoption. It is a stair-climbing event at the Southfield Towers, in the 3,000 Tower, where there's 28 flights of stairs that athletes and individuals run to raise money. The event itself has two parts. One part is for elite athletes, and we have elite athletes that come in, we've got about 20 athletes that come in from all over the nation, and they run a power hour. It's how many laps of 28 flights of stairs they can complete in one hour. Our winner last year went up 15 times, 15 times to the top, 28 flights of stairs, take the elevator down, and back up again. We also have another stairwell, that we call it For the Others, like myself. These are the non-athletes, these are the family people, and they come and they, and they run those flights of stairs. What I'm asking for from you today is to just bring awareness to this event that's happening right here in this city, that helps children all over our state. We have, you can do that by coming and attending, donating, or being a sponsor. We have sponsorships for everyone, at any level, starting at $250, all the way up to large company sponsorships of $5,000. The other thing that I'm asking for is just some support. One year, we had the fire department come out, and it was a joy to every family there. So we had three firefighters run in 2019. So I just want to bring awareness and promotion to what's going on in Southfield. I've got some copies of our flyers, if you can hand that out.
And also, our fire chief is in the back, if you want to see if he'll come out again.
Oh, I'm going to lock him down in a few seconds. There's three sets of flyers in there, and I just want you to show a couple of signs, because these are real children and real families, all over Michigan, that Southfield are making sure they're in permanent homes. So I want to say thank you to the city of Southfield, and thanks for letting me run over my time, let me.
Do you have a website?
Yes, it's giftofadoption.org. There is a QR code on the paperwork that she's going to show you, there's a QR code.
Okay.
It's not directly to me, we do everything through our foundation.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
This, I may be out of line, but I'd like to say, can we make a donation in honor of our colleague who was adopted himself? Can we do that? Is that appropriate? Can we do it?
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the rules are about city money, but we can definitely get together as colleagues.
Well, we should do that, if you guys don't mind. We'll talk about it, and we'll make sure.
Yeah, if you're unable to do anything, as, because of bylaws.
Maybe we'll talk personally.
You can always come out to the event, and just lending your name to the event, or being there, doing a half a flight of stairs, taking a picture on the stairs, is going to drive awareness and help bring the child.
We'll do something, again, in honor of our colleague, because he always talked to me about it, I don't know about you guys, but, you know, thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't mean to put us on the spot, but.
All right, our next speaker is Amari Kenyatta.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Brown. Mary Brown?
I'm Mary Brown, but I decided to be speaker, I'm sure you don't want to hear that.
Okay.
You're true Mary Brown. Okay.
All right, no worries. All right, our next speaker is Garland McWilliams.
Good evening, everyone. Mr. Mayor, city council members, and city officials. My concern that I'd like to bring up is, you know, progress on the Northland site. I live in the Greenfield, Mount Vernon area, on Pennsylvania, and there's a strip of stores on Greenfield there that, that they've opened up recently, Five Below, Ross, Burlington, and a furniture store, just nice, nice progress and everything. But the Northland site has just been a pile of dirt for quite some time, and I guess there was a plan to, you know, rejuvenate it, and the apartments on Greenfield are almost finished, but, you know, there's no, no shopping or anything in Northland. And Northland was the first shopping mall in the country, and I wonder whether or not it could be designated as a historic site. I think that would be very fitting, you know, for Northland. It, you know, it started things all over the country, you know, shopping malls all over the country, it was the first one. And I think, you know, when that project gets, finally gets done, you know, I think it'd be icing on a cake for Southfield and that area and everything. It'd be a beautiful welcome to Southfield, come, this is what we have here, we have this historic site, shopping and everything, first in the whole country, and I think that's something we're very proud of. So I just want to know, you know, what's going on with it, what kind of progress, progress is happening with it, and, you know, I just want to know. We could be missing out on something really nice, you know, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Joseph Person.
Good evening, City Council, Madam City Clerk. Today, ladies and gentlemen, an article was published today, 2027-2025, the front page of Detroit News regarding the upcoming city clerk election. The article contains several inaccuracies. The Southfield, the Southfield Laker Village Democratic Club officially endorsed our candidate for city clerk.
Excuse me, point of order, Madam Attorney, would this be considered campaigning?
I think at this point, if we let him complete the sentence, and then we can come back to that.
Okay.
If we let him complete the sentence, because he's commenting on an article in the newspaper, so.
Right.
Okay.
Also, just for the record, I'm a registered parliamentarian. I didn't quote a name or anything. You can't take away my rights in terms of what I'm talking about, so I need to get my minutes, my seconds back. Anyway, as I was saying, the Southfield Laker Village Democratic Club officially endorsed an individual, you know, for the city clerk June 2025, and has actively supported that campaign since, through canvassing efforts. The club seeks to clarify the record, noting that the other candidate, that the other candidate did not ask for an endorsement, did not seek an endorsement until later on, after we did what we did. Ladies and gentlemen, the city clerk is supposed to be committed to upholding election integrity. The positions held by the Southfield Laker Village Democratic Club are focused solely on ensuring fair elections, adherence to established procedures, with no race, no relation to race. For additional information, we ask the readers are encouraged to consult today's Detroit News article, and refer to case number 120 CV 1028, Valley versus Whitman. And also, Mr. President Medibon, I'd like to have the document where you just talked from all of the things you added, from your, when people speak at communications, I'd like to have a copy, because I'd like to understand your parliamentary procedure, because unless the city attorney is a parliamentarian, you can't tell us, make a decision, you can't make a decision based on what you think. I'd like to have an opinion from a parliamentarian for the, for the Southfield.
Our next speaker is Baxter Hall. Is Baxter Hall here? Our next speaker is Keith Harris.
I just heard what the parliamentarian just said. For a parliamentarian, he should know the rules. You can't bid our democratic people against one another. We are running the most corrupt election for this clerk's office. When he knew, when he started talking negative about our current clerk, he knew he had to run somebody against her. So what he did, he went to one person, said, hey, I need you to run, then he divided the vote, but at the same time, what I'm sitting here saying, I'm listening to a parliamentarian that put rules into effect that please him. That's against the parliamentarian rules. I'm sitting here listening to a man that makes everything about him. He wants his wife to be the deputy clerk. How can you be the parliamentarian, say, I'm running somebody, but I want you to make my wife your deputy clerk? See, I'm so tired of this corruption. We sit here and we talk about vote deniers, and as the Bible say, I can't put a thorn in somebody's eye without pulling the one out of my own. Mr. Persons got to wake up. Everybody in this democratic club got to wake up. It's one of the reasons we pushing to dismantle this club. How are you going to have an election the day after the election, but you got the whole election rigged in your, in your favor? You use the same precinct delegates, you use the same people all the time, you cannot use appointed and elected officials on the board. You cannot use the same precinct delegates over and over again, who are in your favor. We have a serious problem with Mr. Persons. When I first met him, the first thing he told me is, I'm the head Negro in charge, and I was insulted. I was insulted, because, I mean, I work construction, we call people like that straw bosses, and nobody bossed me. He tells people he's the reason why we vote Democrat. I don't think so. We vote Democrat because we are a party, and I love the Democratic Party. I've been voting Democrat for 54 years, and not because of Joe Persons, it's because I believe in who's running. So we have some serious problems. I'm not going to keep listening to what the Democrats are doing, when I'm watching my own party be corrupt and illegal, and I'll be damned, and we not going to have an election for the Democratic Club. I'm asking that that election be postponed, because it's corrupt, and I will be putting that in writing.
Our next speaker is Pamela Gerald.
And let all of God's people say amen. You know, I want to extend an apology to the candidate that was disrespected at the last televised meeting. For the people that are not courageous enough to apologize, if you're watching, Mr. Gabby Grossbard, I apologize for them, and forgive them for they not know what they do. I had a lot of residents contact me and send me a text message that appeared as if the text message was coming from the clerk's office. The clerk's office legally cannot send you a text message talking about a filing error, and then tell you to come in and redo your ballot, or to spoil your ballot to write someone's name in. So to the seniors that were duped and bamboozled, and thank God you sent me the text, I was up here on Friday, I stopped a lot of you from doing that. Whenever you see a candidate's name on a text message, it came from that candidate, not the clerk's office. I do not like, and I don't always agree with Keith Harris, but the level of corruption and chaos in this election for the city clerk's office is like nothing I've ever seen, and I have a 43-year history with this city. I am disgusted, I'm disappointed, and I really don't care what you think about me, I'm concerned about the process, the misinformation, and the attempts to weaponize our police department, because you disagree with something that someone has to say. As you alluded in your comments, we can agree to disagree with elected officials, and if you want me to get up here and quote some lawsuits that went through the Michigan Court. if you want me to get up here and quote some lawsuits that went through the Michigan Court of Appeals that talk about how we can say what we want to say, I'll do that. He's not the only one that can give you a docket number. I can do that, too. You cannot stop someone from coming to a council meeting because they disagree with you or because you don't like what they say. You don't have to weaponize our police department. You don't have to boast about being on city council because it reduces your significance. As I said 43 years ago, coming up on 44 years, I'm going to be here when none of you are up there on that dais. PG, thank you.
That concludes our communications. Um, we did have a, a question about, I'm sorry? I'm sorry, what, what's your name? I don't have anything. When did, all right, um, when did you submit it? Today? Okay. Okay. So if you would like to come up, you still have three minutes. If you could just give us your name for the record, please?
Good evening, everyone, council members, mayor, Madam Clerk, Valerie Johnson. Um, so this past Thursday, there was an event that was given, um, by Jay Reid and also the young people. And that event was to bring awareness, not only for the young voters of Southfield, but for the existing voters of Southfield. And I also volunteered on that, uh, project as well. And unfortunately, I did not see any current incumbents or reelected officials present for that forum. Now, this is my thing here. Everyone's entitled to their opinions or how they feel. But just as us, we entitled to our votes, and we also entitled to our voices. There was only four candidates that showed up. Those candidates are running for election, not existing candidates. One candidate for mayor showed up, not existing. But you guys want our votes. Do not forget about us just because we not in that age bracket, but you cannot discredit, regardless if they're 18 to 98, we still have a voice and our voices will be heard. And trust and believe, those seats are guaranteed. You have to earn our voices, our votes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We did have one speaker who, who wanted to know about the historical designation of Northland Mall. I don't know what that process is. Um, Ms. Freeman, I know that, did you, or Mr. Mayor, do you?
I just wanted to share, I did speak with, um, him and I, I, I gave him update on Northland. I also referred him to Molly and, um, you know, just shared what was happening and if, um, you know, just updated him.
Okay.
The property owner has to request it, um, and they would start with the planning department. Uh, I'd also add that, um, the developer is honoring the history of Norplan by keeping the name for one thing where other people years ago said, oh, you have to get rid of that name. Um, recently repainted the water tower and using the original 1954 Northland logo that, uh, he's secured, um, permission, uh, to, to use. So, um, again, it's called Northland City Center. Um, and they're, uh, honoring Hudson's as well.
All right, thank you. All right, council, we will move on to our minutes to approve. Take a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I moved it. We approve the regular meeting minutes of August 25th, 2025.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the regular meeting minutes of August 25th, 2025. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have our consent agenda, and council, I'd like to ask that we move items O, P, Q, and R from the consent agenda to the attorney's portion this evening. So we are left with items A through N. I would also ask, are there any items you'd like pulled for further discussion? Councilwoman Banks?
Items D, E, no, excuse me, items D and F.
Okay.
You already did the other ones. Thank you.
Yep. Counsel, any other items you'd like pulled? Councilwoman Brightwell?
Demis Banks, D and F?
Yes.
No, those are, those, I, I want those pulled also.
Okay. Um, so I will ask, uh, our Public Works Director, I believe these are under him. So, uh, Councilwoman Banks, would you like to ask your questions?
Thank you. Um, for item D, auto body repair, contract renewal, there is no cost. Um, as far as what is the renewal or the proposed recommendation? I see we, um, utilize our services for three years, and all three years, the dollar amount has gone up. I don't see any background as to what justified these costs. And I personally am not comfortable approving something that has no dollar cost. So I don't know if this has to be pulled, Mr. Chair, and further reviewed at a committee of the whole meeting. We, we just don't approve things with no dollar amounts.
So this is a, uh, this is an as needed contract, which is limited by the budget that was approved by council in that line item.
Well, still.
So. Good, sorry. Now, I do want to provide some clarification. The, the costs that were provided here, um, we did receive some, uh, updated costs as I was discussing with Councilwoman, uh, Brightwell earlier today. Um, there was a, a staff member who was, uh, out of office for a few days, and so we had to sort of work around and try to get that information. But they returned today and we, we were able to get more accurate information. It's, uh, in fiscal year 22, we were looking at $297,000. Um, fiscal year 23 was 321, 322,000 dollars approximately, and fiscal year 24, uh, 274, 273,000 dollars. Um, the number of accidents went from 83 to 80 to 63 over those, uh, those years.
So the numbers that have been presented to us are incorrect?
Those were estimates based on, uh, the data that we were able to access. Um, but when our staff member who was out of town, when they, uh, returned, we were able to get access to more accurate data today.
Counsel, I'll leave it up to you, but I'm not comfortable approving something that has no dollar amount. We, we, you can approve it on an as needed basis, not to exceed a certain amount, but I, I think that recommendation needs to come from you and your department, um, before this is approved. But again, that's just my opinion. I will not be voting in favor of this unless there's a dollar amount attached. Thank you.
All right. And Councilwoman Brightwell, you had a question on the same item?
Yeah, I, I called on this earlier. The number, the dollar they're, they're approximate. And I called the, uh, director and the fiscal director. Do, are you able to get, you were able to get actual numbers?
Yes, and that's what I, I just read out to you.
Okay, I heard those. Can you send those numbers out to us?
I'll send those to you.
See, the, I'm, I was looking at a, a trend, so, um.
So there's, there's a clear trend in the, well, maybe not so clear, but the accident numbers have gone from 83 to 80 to 63. So that, that's going down, right? The, uh, the, the, the repair costs have also decreased from around 300,000 down to 372, 373,000.
Okay.
Oh, sorry, 273,000.
Okay. Well, I would like to see those, those actual numbers and that, um. Okay, well, I, I would just like to see those numbers.
Yes, we'll, we'll send those.
Counsel, any other questions on this item? Um, I will ask, is it, if we don't approve it and it comes back at our committee of a whole meeting on, on November 10th with, um, either a more accurate, with the more accurate numbers that you have and, and/or amount not to exceed, and obviously if we exceed that, we can go over that, is that, will that hurt your current operations?
No, it won't. Um, I, I will say that we have other contracts that are set up like this as well, um, as needed, uh, contracts similar.
And I think, I think the as needed contracts are fine, but I think what Councilwoman Banks would like is a, a number not to exceed, and then once we exceed that, come back to council. And you have the, you have, you can get a pretty good estimate of what you may need for, for that year. Okay. Um, before we move to item F, um, I'd just like to remind the audience, this is a business meeting. If you need to talk to your friend or neighbor, uh, please go outside into the hall. We, this, we can hear a lot of the whispers up here, and it can be distracting. So if you do need to have a conversation, please go out into the hall. Thank you. All right, Councilwoman Banks, you had a question on item F?
Well, there's, I'd like to ask that this item be pulled and brought back before at a committee of the whole meeting. There's, um, some vehicles that are being purchased, and I don't understand why some of these other ones can't be used in place. And I just think that council needs to have a discussion on this. I mean, we just continuously seem to, especially in public works, see, um, purchasing more and more vehicles. And I see two vehicles here that could be used in place of purchasing another vehicle. So I would like to further discuss this at a committee of the whole meeting. And I think that when an item like this is going to come before council, it should be presented to council at a committee of the whole meeting versus placed on a consent agenda. We're talking quite a few, few vehicles here, um, and a lot of money. Thank you.
Councilwoman Brightwell, you had a question on this item as well?
Yeah, my question dealt with, um, fleet management. And, uh, I brought this up a couple of times over this year and since I've been on council. Um, and I did talk to the, the director today, and I understand we do have a fleet management system. Uh, what I've been told is, a couple of years ago, I've, I've brought this up. Um, and our, our motor vehicles are one of, one of our bigger asset bases. And so I want to get an understanding of, are we actually utilizing the, the fleet management system? And, and I think out of the conversation we had today that, um, it, it will be used more in the future. And the, that is just a rationale for the fleet management system. It's, uh, you know, the, let me, let me put it in context. The biggest organization in America with the fleet is the post office. The post office has a fleet. And, and I was at AT&amp;T, we had a fleet. So I, I didn't deal with it, but I was in, in finance. I dealt with it from a management standpoint. And I was just trying to, to see, can we start utilizing that system to better, because when these will, it, it would tell us when, when we need to replace something, what the mileage are, what, what kind of problem, what's problematic with, with certain vehicles, and you take them out. So can you just explain to what, what, a bit which you relayed to me earlier today?
Yeah, so next, uh, next year, the, the first part of next year will be heavily focused in our department on fleet management. We are, uh, you know, council had approved phase two of the Open Gov, uh, implementation that will be focused on fleet management and making sure that we have the right processes in place. Um, currently, we do have a fleet management software. It's, uh, we, we don't necessarily have the best practices in, in, in place right now. That's what we'll be focusing on in the beginning part of 2026, the first half of 2026.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. Um, I am hearing from my council colleagues that would like, uh, both D and F to come back to our cow on November 10th.
All right.
So we will, we will pull those from our agenda. Councilwoman Hoag, you got a question?
No, I was going to motion the others.
Okay, so, uh, any other questions on the consent agenda? Okay, I'll take a motion, Councilwoman Hoag.
A motion that we approve consent agenda items, A, approval to purchase one mobile OCP 25 compatible radio, four portable radios and three control heads, B, Southfield Police Department Traffic Improvement Association grant, C, time clock plus, Alatech software, five-year renewal agreement, 2025 through 2030, E, purchase of easement, rody machine, riding machine, uh, G, telegraph road and eight-mile road interchange, streetlight installation, the DET agreement, H, what is it, Vervek Woods Park Green Infrastructure Project receipt of bids, I, authorization to renew grant agreement between the state of Michigan, the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission and the Department of Licensing and Regulatory Affairs in the city of Southfield, J, authorization to increase contract for managed assigned council coordinator in accordance with the Michigan Indigent Defense Commission grant, K, approval of a renewal of contract with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Michigan for claims administration services and stop loss insurance, L, receive and place on file police and fire appointment to civil service commission, M, authorization to seek 2025 Oakland County access to transit program grant, and the last one in 2026 council meeting agenda schedule.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Hicks, to approve consent agenda items A, B, C, E, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, and N. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And I just want to give a special, uh, shout out to Councilwoman Hoag. Um, for item G, the telegraph road and eight-mile interchange streetlight installation, she was, uh, championed that and would not, uh.
Let it go.
Wouldn't, uh, was pushing to make sure that that happened. So we appreciate, um, we appreciate that. And, um, I see our city engineer, uh, thank you for getting that to happen. Hopefully, uh, that interchange will be lit up. Um, we're hoping by spring, correct? Starting in spring, okay. But now that we've approved it, they gotta start all the, all the work. So again, thank you very much. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, next we have two items, uh, to discuss. Um, and they are both for our parks and, uh, rec team. Um, while they're coming up, I just want to say the last, uh, couple of weeks, last couple of Fridays, we've had a lot of ribbon cuttings. Uh, the Loser Woods Dog Park ribbon cutting, that's a great park. Um, this past Friday, we had a, um, I want to say carpenter, like Beachwoods, um, ribbon cutting with new nature trails, the biggest pavilion in the, in the city, uh, new play equipment, expanded parking lot. It's, a, a lot of great things are going on in our parks. And now, um, we're working on the internal side of the recreation. So thank you very much and take it away.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your comments and council support on both Fridays. Um, it were, it was great events and a lot of hard work. Thank you so much, and thank you for your comments and council support on both Fridays, uh, we were, it was great events and a lot of hard work by everyone in the room, so I appreciate it.
Can you move the mic, it's, we're getting feedback.
Is it okay?
We'll try it.
Okay. If I could stand back here. There we go, Parks and Recreation is here asking for your authorization, uh, for Shaw Integrated Solutions for new carpet, is it still doing it?
Yeah.
Try to turn that on the mic.
Maybe a necklace or something.
Better? So Parks and Recreation has been working with purchasing, um, to replace our carpet in the pavilion, which is over twenty years old. We are looking at using the Omni Partners Cooperative Contract, which provides a city with the most advantageous pricing by combining its requirements with other public agencies, uh, we've used those before. The price includes the demolition and disposable, and disposal of the existing carpet tile, as well as the installation. Special note, we have been working with Facilities Department, um, in the selection process going forward, uh, we would be taking the funds out of the Parks and Recreation budget of a hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and twenty-one dollars and fifty-four cents, so we are asking for your approval to go forward with this purchase.
Counsel, do you have any questions on this item? I, the only question I have, and I, thank you, because I know that this carpet is definitely worn out.
It is.
There's, the floor has electrical outlets, we're gonna make sure that those are not gonna cause any problems.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, you have a question?
Yes.
Sure.
I brought this up before with respect, not necessarily on your contract, but this is probably for the administrator, um, this is, every once in a while, this thing, it pops up not to exceed, we have approving contracts not to exceed, and, um, I would prefer contracts to be, this is, this is what we're gonna pay, not to exceed a dollar amount.
That's, that's my fault, um, I put that in there, I do, that's our oversight, I know that you had made a comment before about that, um, and I understand that, and I know that through this discussion, what has happened is that the city administrator has the opportunity, um, to approve something past the dollar amount, a certain percentage, and that staff needs to come back to our city administrator, so that's my fault.
So if I can just also clarify, because we did have this discussion with the city administrator, when we have the numbers that say not to exceed, if we are specific in the dollar amount, anytime we don't hit that specific dollar amount, if, if let's say it's not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars and the price comes out, or that we say the price is ninety thousand dollars and that's what we vote on, and the price is eighty thousand dollars, they have to come back and we have to amend that vote. So by saying a price not to exceed gives us, if it's lower, they can still pay the bill, if, if it goes higher, they, they will, and they have, come back and said, okay, there was a price adjustment, but when you give an exact dollar amount, that is the vote, that's the motion, and it has to be that amount, and we would amend many of our motions if we didn't stick with that exact amount, which is why we say not to exceed.
Well, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with that, because that, that opens the door to too much financial wrangling, so if we, like, if I go to buy a house, this is who I'm gonna pay for that house, if I go to buy a candy bar, that's who I'm gonna pay for the candy bar, so it, I brought this up several times, I don't know why it's keep popping up not to exceed.
The language that you're talking is not to exceed is not in the recommended resolution or the resolution itself, we actually state the contract amount.
Okay, okay, well, that's what I prefer to, I mean, just from a finance standpoint, I don't wanna, it, this, it doesn't make sense, all right.
But the actual action requested, there's no not to exceed.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilwoman Hicks.
Did you have the, uh, reach out with COSA as, as a?
Yes, especially for the next item.
Okay.
What was the question?
Did, did we reach out to COSA? But the answer was, I don't know if you heard of it, it's, yes, and especially with the next item, which we'll go into more detail.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, counsel? All right, I will take a motion, if there's one.
I move that we approve the authorization to accept proposal from Shaw Integrated Solutions for carpet, for, for new carpet.
Support.
It's been moved by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to approve the authorization to accept the proposals from Shaw Integrated Solutions for new carpet tile for the pavilion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, many, many people, thank you, appreciate it. Uh, before I introduce Kayon Jones, our Recreation Superintendent, who will be walking you through this next, uh, council item, I do want to respond to Councilwoman Hicks's request, um, I did reach out to, this next item is in regards to moving forward with our senior project, uh, through the grant with Oakland County, our matching grant, uh, moving forward with the senior space. We have talked about, and Kayon will talk a little bit more about how we have worked internally with our departments and, uh, with public and with COSA. We reached out to a couple of members, Brenda Chambers Three, who is the COSA chairperson, uh, wanted to send her support, uh, for this moving forward, she is unable to be here tonight and is babysitting her grandchild. Pierre Gilliam, who is also a COSA board member, many of you know her as well, she happens to be in Aruba today, otherwise she would be here in support of this item, so I wanted to make sure that folks here knew that we had their support going forward. At this time, I'd like to call up Kayon Jones, uh, who will walk you through the item.
All right, hopefully you don't have as much feedback, so. If you could also try to talk a little, a little bit louder.
Good evening, good evening, do you hear me, hear me?
Yep.
All right, so Parks and Rec Department will respectfully ask for your authorization to move forward with the marcat and the pavilion redesign for seniors. So you can see on this first slide, and kinda jumping into it like Terry said, we, we did, really did do our due diligence in making sure that we went about this project the right way. To start this project, we created a panel with, um, internal departments, uh, facility maintenance and our planning department, and once we formed our, our committee, then we then, um, with the help of OHM, we then held presentations for our, um, COSA board and also our Parks and Recreation Board. Angie Burgess, our senior coordinator, she also went around to our programs and talked to our seniors in our programs, showed them what we were doing, got their feedback and what they wanted, um, we were able to secure samples of the furniture that we were requesting, and we were able to have our COSA members, our rec board members, and also our seniors in our programs, actually like test the furniture out and give us their feedback on the different types of furniture they liked, so. Uh, we really put a lot of work into this and am kinda excited to see this thing through. So if anybody see the pavilion in the morning and you see all of our programs that's going on, you'll see a bunch of seniors in the pavilion, you'll see seniors walking around the pavilion, but you'll also see them, uh, moving some of those red chairs into a corner, or moving some of those hard benches around, just to kinda sit and congregate with each other, so it was really important for us to, um, create spaces for them that was inviting and relaxing for them. So you'll see in some of these photos right here, uh, we have different type of, um, furniture, um, from sectionals to love seats, um, for tables for larger gatherings, and also smaller tables for, uh, more intimate settings for individuals that maybe wanna play chess together or play cards together. You'll see some of the three panels in between the pillars, you'll see, uh, those are actually water features, uh, we actually got that feedback from some of our seniors in our programs, how it would be really nice to be able to sit somewhere and hear water relaxing in the background, so that was something that we added as well. You'll see the TVs on the wall, you'll see the, um, the, the, the computer stations as well, computer stations would be great, because it'll allow our seniors to come in and do some of their, their business, such as, you know, tax, tax time, or any kinda sign up for programs or things like that. And just the biggest thing is just offering them a space to be together and a, a safe space, safe, comfortable environment. You'll see different, you'll also see, sorry, you'll also see the cafe, um, to, at the top of, in the top picture, our plan is to have a vendor come in and provide coffee, tea, and pastries, and pastries to our seniors. This is also kinda going back to the carpet, so you guys can see a picture of what the carpet will look like, carpet's gonna be really, really amazing, we get this carpet in, because we do have some programs right now that, that don't like to be out on the carpet, especially our, like, our fitness classes, so getting this carpet opens up a lot of new opportunity. We are also planning on, um, purchasing dividers as well, and the dividers will allow us to section off the pavilion and create more intimate spaces, that's also another issue that we have, whenever we put programs out in the pavilion, uh, one of the biggest issues that we have is people don't really like to be seen by everybody that's walking past, so this will allow us the opportunity to create more intimate spaces, and also have more than one program going on at one time, as you guys can see in this, in this layout. So now we, we are wanting to expand this project down to the marcat room, which will be really, really great, because it will add as an additional space for our seniors to go to, so you'll see we'll have the lounge zone, which will be an extension of the furniture concepts that we have in the pavilion, and it'll be put down in the marcat room as well. We plan on having the old carpet removed and new carpet put in, uh, wall tiles replaced, ceiling tiles replaced, um, lighting replaced in the room, uh, we do have plans on adding TVs around the room and also new artwork, we have plans on adding a new storage and shelving, shelving, uh, shelving area for our seniors, and also are planning to purchase new tables and chairs for that room as well. So really excited to see this, really excited to see this program, this, this project start and, and get underway. Any questions for me?
Councilwoman Hicks?
So, um, I'm a senior in training.
You're a what?
A senior in training. But I just would like to kinda, kinda get a pulse from any of the seniors who would wanna raise their hand, are, would you be in support of what's being presented? Or you'd be seniors in training like me, you know, but I would like to see was, if what was presented makes sense, okay?
Oh, excuse me, this, this is not a participation session.
Just raise your hand, I just wanted to raise, I just wanted to get a pulse, as, you know, a real-time pulse from seniors, does this make sense? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, um, I think this is an exciting program, I know the seniors, um, have been wanting a designated area for a while, I do have some concerns though, and I think I expressed it last time, with reference to the marcat room. The, um, and I, I can't speak for now, but I know that room was highly utilized for, during the presidential and congressional election years, um, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in the clerk's office, and there truly is not enough work upstairs, we can't always use this room, because other people meet in this room, so you can't lock this room down. So how are we going to accommodate the clerk's office moving forward for some of our big elections? I don't, I don't see where the room is going to be, we ha, we use the marcat room a lot.
So we, we have, um, met with the clerk's office, um, and we do have plans with, so once this project takes place, we will no longer rent the marcat room out or provide the marcat room to other departments, it will be strictly a senior space, and we have, um, met with the clerk's office early to, um, come up with alternatives.
You, okay, you've met with the clerk's office to come up with alternatives?
Yes, ma'am.
What does that mean, please, I'm?
So we are currently looking at other spaces, and the library has come up as an option, um, yes.
So then you will not be utilizing the marcat room?
The mar, once our senior project is completed, the marcat will not be used for anything other than seniors, we won't rent it out, or we won't provide it to other departments.
Okay, I think I'm not understanding, I think what I'm trying to say is, I think the marcat room needs to be utilized by the city clerk's office, especially for the big election years, there is no room to assemble, put together, et cetera, I don't know.
What he's saying is that they're, they spoke with the clerk's office, and they're looking at all the other alternatives, including utilizing space at the library.
But are, will the tables in there be, will the, the tables be removed, I mean, it looks like you're talking about putting TVs in there, sofas in there, that's not gonna help, um, when it comes to elections.
They're not using it for elections. It's, it's a, it will be designated as a senior space only, it will not even be rented out, um, for any purpose, it will strictly be for Parks and Rec Senior Services, dedicated space, so the city clerk's office has been informed, and they said that they will utilize other areas within the city for election help, an extra room, should they need.
They will utilize other areas, okay, can, can you tell me where the other areas are? Because that's the problem, there are no other areas that I'm aware of, Mr. Zorn.
He said, he said the library was an option.
Okay, for the clerk's office or for the mar, for the seniors?
For the clerk's office to utilize the library.
The clerk's office cannot transport all the election equipment to the library, keep it in lockdown, when you are talking big elections, presidential years, congressional years, um, I'm not, I'm not understanding this.
Also, the, the idea that it's, that's private, I mean, real, uh, private information to be moved from one location to another, how is that gonna happen?
I mean, it's gotta be locked down, locked up.
That's, that's, that's serious, that's very serious to take, we're talking about transporting.
I guess, and I guess my concern is, because you can't lock everything up in here, because council meets in here, planning commission meets in here, other boards meet in here.
Right, right.
I would hate in the future for the clerk's office to be in a situation, we just don't have room to do this, this, and this.
I think, go ahead, it needs to be discussed much more later.
Discussions have been that we'd find space in the library, the lower level, for when these machines really needs to be tested, I mean.
Well, it's, it's not for testing the machines, I'm talking about assembling, um.
And, and we, we can find space in the lower level of the library, at one point, we actually had talked about moving to the career center, when the previous director was over there, the other program is where taxes are prepared, uh, what, the, the benefit of this for our seniors is there's a desire to be able to use the underground parking lot, come into the marcat room. I will tell you, you know, with the early voting and some of the other things, clerk's offices are requiring a lot more space than what was, this building was originally designed, but we believe we can accommodate the testing and the other items that have historically happened, probably about two months out of the year in the marcat room and part of the library, we're gonna have to come up with a caged-in area for that to happen.
Just thinking off the top of my head. The, the emergency management room, that could potentially be an option here as well, because that's downstairs in Parks and Rec area.
That's true.
But I don't know, again, what their security is or anything else, but that's, that's about the size of the marcat room, if I recall.
It, it just, just for council's, um, just for council's note, um, we, like much of this project, we haven't done this in a while, so we really have been talking with the clerk's office a great deal, because, and working with them closely, especially Kayon, uh, because as Fred had intimated and, and said, uh, with early, uh, voting, um, the spaces in Parks and Recreation and the movement of people and programs has been great, uh, high number, so we go ten days without one fifteen. We go ten days without some of our classrooms, um, when marcat room is used by the clerk's office, it's used for over three months out of, out of the year, so what we're doing is trying to, um, establish some space dedicated for seniors, so we don't have to move, but also know that we're gonna have to be creative within our entire city and not just with Parks and Recreation and that marcat room. So we're, we're trying to look at, at other, at other options, so we are not ignoring that at all, nor are we ignoring the security part of it, because we are. because we are more than anybody very much aware, besides the clerk's office, 115 comes in there and we don't go in there. 115 is on lockdown. There's things in that room, same thing in Marquette in the past. So we very much are aware of the security and of the logistics that you're referring to that go into it. We just want all of us to be creative as a whole instead of monopolizing that Marquette Room as, as much as we are. And if we can provide this space for our seniors, if we can get them inside that building easier, safer, bathrooms are there, it's, the accessibility is great. It would definitely benefit, benefit the group. But we are not, like I said, we are not ignoring the fact that we still, as a, as a city team, we still have responsibility for, for those voting times. Can we bring this item back to a future committee of the whole meeting to further discuss? And maybe at that time, we can see if there's other room options.
The only catch, and you obviously need my permission to do what you're just suggesting, but our numbers, our bidding numbers are good until October 29th, 30th, the end of October. So not saying that they still wouldn't hold even after, but we do take the risk of that if it goes past the end of October.
And I, I don't have a problem with the, with the area in the pavilion. It's just the, the Marquette Room area.
But, so I have, I'm sorry, are you done?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Councilwoman Haines?
Well, I kind of agree with her. And I understand, I really support the idea of the senior room, but I know that room is used for multiple things, as well as neighborhood meetings as well. So what you're saying is in essence that it cannot be used for anything else. And my question too is, how much discussion have you had with the library? To, to just assume that they're going to allow us to use, use that? And also you're transporting very important information, and this is the city office. I mean, and the library is the library. I just, I can't see where that's a good idea. I mean, having worked with the polls and worked with voting, you want to keep everything in here to keep the integrity of things. And that's very, very serious. And it's not to take away from the senior idea, but I think that, you know, we could have had this discussion some time ago to kind of think this out. And to his point about asking the seniors, I just want to know how many, or was there a committee of seniors that were asked this, to look at this, to see? Because I'm not really hearing that part of it as well. And I think it's a very good idea, but I think it needs a little bit more substance and time. And we're pressed with this date, but...
Mr. President, the, we're probably talking about 90 days out of, out of the year, a quarter of the year. And I'm certain we can find 1,000, 1,200 square feet in the lower level. We may need to do some moving, moving some things around, but there's, there's storage space cages down there. I mean, we could find a place that's secure to ensure that this happens. And the Marquette Room, when you look at it, there are two points of entry. We can probably come into with a wire-caged area and find 1,000. Basically what we need is a room slightly larger than a classroom. There's a lot of excessive space when the Marquette Room is used, as, as well as even Room 115. And there are cities of equivalent population who didn't have the type of room we have. We could find something in the lower level. Mr. McReena and I personally will scout for that area. I'm asking the council to move this forward with the bid. And by the 10th, we can come out, come back to council with an alternative location. Unless I hear from the city clerk that we need more than 1,000, 1,200 square feet, we'll do it. But when I've seen the Marquette Room in use, it's been about a third of that room. And I apologize, I don't know the square footage of the Marquette Room.
Do you have any, council, I know there may be some other questions, but right now we're talking about places for the clerk to have voting equipment and election integrity. Are there any other questions regarding that portion of this discussion?
Well, I think what I'm hearing, we all agree we want to support this. But we have to just make sure we find a location on this campus in this building.
In this building, that's...
That's what we have to have. My question, I don't know if the clerk or Councilwoman Banks know, is the 1,000 square footage that he's speaking of, is that sufficient? Because that's what he's going to search for, about, about 1,000.
About, yeah.
Is that sufficient, do you guys think, to, to replace?
Could I speak through the chair?
Yes.
Basically, the Marquette Room at this point is just used for the testing of the election equipment, which takes about two days, three days at the most. And then the training of our election inspectors, chairpersons, and our county board, which takes up about a month, approximately a month. So the fact that we cannot have access to the Marquette Room at all, that it's just off limits and just sequestered for the seniors, that may not work for the trainings. The trainings and, because they take about a month. So that's, that's the question. The testing of the equipment, we could probably find another room because that's only several days at the most. But it's the training, and we have equipment in the room for the training. So I guess if the Marquette Room could be utilized by the seniors and the clerk's office, it would be best. That's what I have to say about it.
I have a different question though. If, if we're having dedicated senior space, we have the rooms on the second floor of Parks and Rec. Will those be utilized as, for senior space or programs as well?
Yes, those rooms will be utilized for programs. We are actually, we're doing way more programming than we'll be used to, and we're actually running out of space right now. So upstairs will be used for programming.
And then what about the other room on the main floor that used to be a big meeting room that had like a kitchen and two offices to the side? Is that room utilized?
That is currently office space for our senior, senior division.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sounds like we have a lot of unread, sounds like we have a lot of unreadiness. And we're, we're trying to have a committee meeting at the council meeting. Can we maybe, again, to Councilwoman Banks's point, table this, have a discussion between the clerk and Parks and Rec so that we can figure out a solution that will make council better aligned?
Colleagues, the administrator just said that's about a size of a classroom and a half.
Half, yep.
That square footage. And he believes he has the location.
So really, it's just a bidding that needs to take place.
I'm sorry?
The bidding is what needs to take place because regardless, they're going to be there, that's their room and they're going to have it. Is that what we're saying? So the conversation's about the rest of the room?
Correct.
I'm trusting that the administrator's saying he can find us another room.
So what, what I would ask though, if we move this forward on, at our next committee of a whole of November 10th, if you can report back what that room is, so we can have that.
He said he can get us one.
Does that, does that work for you, sir?
For the clerk, because they've designed this other room.
Okay. And you said you did work with city departments, COSA, seniors?
Absolutely.
With, with this design, with getting, okay.
Did you meet with the clerk?
Did, you met, yeah, they said they met with, you met with the clerk, correct?
Yes.
Okay, different question I have. These water panels with the water sound, which I love, it's great background noise. Are those removable or are those there all the time? Because when we have bigger events in the pavilion, will those get in the way? Are they breakable? I just want to make sure, I'm just wondering.
So we, we do not have plans of removing them, but we do have plans of blocking that area off whenever we do have shows.
Okay. Council, do you have any other questions?
I do. And on the, by the 29th, what's, what needs to happen by the 29th? Besides our approval, what, what does that mean?
We have to get our, we have to pretty much give notification to the bidders.
The, the...
To keep our, to keep our current quotes.
The quotes could go up, potentially.
Yeah, I was just thinking, I got that.
If you can, if you're going to speak, please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, good evening, everyone. I'm Lauren Christensen from OHM. I'm part of the design team that worked on the project with Parks and Rec. So we do have, you know, some consortium quotes for the equipment, so the furniture. Some of those quotes do expire by the end of this month, as well as the general contractor, I believe it's Diamond, who's in, in that packet as well, to, to perform some of the electrical work, as well as the framing out of, furring out of walls and the other hookups to these pieces. Their, their pricing is held to the 29th. Once we move beyond that 29th, then a lot of these, we have to go back out to bid or, or renew those quotes and get some new pricing. And there's no guarantee that that pricing will remain the same.
And this room that you spoke of, Mr. Chair, the Homeland Security, Councilwoman Banks, are you familiar with that room?
It's been a while since I've been there.
Yes.
Would you think that that's, would that be okay with you? Would you support that?
Is somebody here that can kind of justify it?
Moving it there?
I'd have to see the size of the room.
So I was there a couple of weeks ago, talking with our Homeland Security Director. They, they have tables, chairs, they've cleaned up that room and there's...
Training.
There's plenty of space in that room.
Because it's easier if it's bodies in that room, you can move them to somewhere. How big would that room be, the, the president's speaking on? Is that 1,000?
Yeah.
Is that 1,000 what you're talking about?
They need that room for that, but... There's only two people who currently work in the, in the Homeland Security room?
We can time room for them.
But, well, they have offices off to the side. You still have a whole big, big room. And we're not talking every day. We're talking about a select time, maybe once every two...
No, I'm saying make it strictly for the clerk, because so we don't get in this problem again.
Oh, you can't, you can't do that.
Can't do that, okay.
And the clerk doesn't need that room the, the entire year. We're talking 90 days, 60 days before an election. We're not talking a lot of time.
But the storage of the machines and all?
The storage is, we're not talking about storage.
Just, just, just to utilize those three rooms?
Testing, bringing the people on, assembling.
But I believe that that room is a possibility, as well as Mr. Zorn said he will find, find another, another space.
He's making plans for that room. I mean, I was just down there, so...
Correct. But what I'm saying is it's not utilized at all times.
Right, but if you put, if he's making plans to utilize that room and make the space what he wants, how are you going to bring testing machines in there?
It's, it's a possib, I'm watching as it's a possibility.
Okay, can we seek other alternatives? Because I think that we're assuming something without checking with that person.
And I never said it was...
I mean, I'm just saying, if that doesn't work, what's plan, if that's plan A, what's plan B?
But that's what Mr. Zorn is...
I'm just trying to meet their deadline.
But that's what Mr. Zorn said. He will report back to us at our next meeting on November 10th.
So let me ask this question. Then, the idea, I'm just talking, of the library. So it's not like we're moving any ballots or anything. It's strictly just the equipment and training, that's all.
The equipment itself is valuable and should be protected. And so that could be the issue with using the library. I haven't, I hadn't heard anything about the library. I'm not sure.
The library is a library.
Who acquires to that, but that sounds a little bit problematic. It would have to be somewhere downstairs in the lower level.
That's, the library shouldn't be a thought.
The library could possibly be utilized for training, but the equipment testing, because we have to test all of the machines for each poll, that would, I don't believe it will work to cart it over to the library and protect it.
Mr. President? Councilman Hoag has the floor. Councilman Haines?
I can speak a little bit, not for the library, but they program and plan things three to four months ahead of time. And if you're talking about blocking a whole month, you're talking about the meeting room, which is not going to work. I can tell you that now, we have, there are programs that are there designated monthly at that library. That can't, that's, that's what the library does. And if you're talking about having meetings, that, auditorium maybe, yes, but not the library, the meeting room itself, that's out. Because they have programs. Now, you can talk with Director, Library, City Librarian, Mary Beal, but I know for a fact, we're planning now for our jazz and blues for March, April, and May, and it has to be done by December. And we have to lock those dates down to have that room and for other programs as well. So, and their meetings. And the city also uses it for different things.
So I, I just, I want to reiterate, I understand that the elections are a very important part of our society, but we're not talking year-round use of a room. We're talking about temporary use of a room. And Mr. Zorn said that he can find the space, either if it's cleaning out a storage unit, that they can turn into a, an area, or finding another room that can be used for, for that space. Now, I, I don't want to keep talking about hypotheticals. I would ask that we either table this and not vote and risk spending more money, there's that potential. Or we vote on it and trust that Mr. Zorn will report back to us in two weeks with a room that he has found for this, for that purpose, when, again, we're talking 60 days every couple of years. Councilman Banks?
If we were to approve the request this evening, can we approve it with just a holdup on the Marquette Room redesign? And maybe, just to see? I mean, not unless things have changed. I'm very familiar with the layout downstairs, and I have no idea where that room would be. And during a presidential, we have a new clerk coming on board for a presidential election. You're talking 30, 16, 90, it could be 120 days. They may need to utilize a room that is secured. And we fought very hard to have that Marquette Room. I can't speak for the present, how it's utilized right now, but that room was a lifesaver. If the county had to come in, if the state of Michigan had to come in ever to look at the equipment, look at the bags, and that was the room where everything was locked up and secured. And it's right down from where everything else is secured. So to move it, to try to transport it to the library in October with rain, snow, possibly sleet, is not a good idea. Not a good idea for our voting equipment.
So my question to the Parks and Rec team, if we approve this, if we approve everything except the Marquette Room, how does that affect your bidding process and plans?
So at this time, they're, they're both kind of bound together in a lot of these bids. So with the general contractor work, Marquette Room was, it was considered an add to their, to their price. Similarly, with the lounge furniture, we're duplicating some elements that you saw in those renderings up in the pavilion space, down in the Marquette Room. So again, those, those quotes that you have to review are tied up in both spaces, basically.
Mr. President, I'm requesting we withdraw the item. I'll meet with Parks and Rec tomorrow. We can ask the bidders to extend. Most of them should be willing to work with us. And we'll come back with a proposed location. We'll work with the city clerk's office as to, you know...
And can you...
The amount of space.
And this will come back November 10th, you believe?
Yes.
Okay.
Are we going to exclude the library altogether?
That's what it sounds like, but...
I just want to make sure. I think that really needs to, the library is a library, and I think that that's just not something we should even tamper with, especially with the cost that she's talking about, the machines, and to risk that, that's very serious.
Okay. All right, so council, this will, this will come back to our committee of a whole meeting on November 10th. And we will plead our case with the bidders to extend it another week or two.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, thanks.
All right. Next, we move into all of our planning items, public... All right. Next, we move into all of our planning items, public hearings and site plans. And our first item is the hearing of confirmation for the special assessment project SS 1177, the Coventry Woods Backyard Drainage Improvements.
Good evening, council. So, on September 29, 2025, the Honorable Body had adopted special assessment resolutions number three and four for the Coventry Woods Drainage Improvements, Backyard Drainage Improvements, SAD. And that authorized the engineering department to see competitive bids. And it's set today, October 27th, as the date for the public hearing of confirmation of the final special assessment role. The proposed improvements were initiated through resident petition. Sixty, 75% of the residents had signed this. There were eight residents that were impacted, or that are impacted in, by this. They've been experiencing severe flooding in their backyards for decades now. And we believe we have come up with a design that will provide a permanent solution. Because this is work that's being done on private property and only benefiting a few residents, we recommended that this be done through a special assessment. And so, we did go out to bid, and the preliminary estimate for the assessable share was $148,802.50. The low bid came in at $112,183. We are recommending that, that reduction in costs be, be fully passed on to the eight property owners. There's no increased cost on the city's side. So, with that $112,183, the lump sum payment, if someone wants to pay lump sum upfront, would be $14,022.88. Or they have the option of spreading the payments out over 10 years at 6% annual interest, which would make the annual payment $1,905.26. So, we are asking that council adopts standards, Special Assessment Resolution Number Five, that will authorize the engineering department to proceed with construction of the project after this public hearing.
Okay. So, we will have a public hearing now for this public hearing number five, hearing of confirmation for the special assessment project SS 117. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
My name is Mary Kenyatta. I live at 23235 Coventry Woods Lane. I'm just gonna make a bid for a better percentage. Hopefully, you received the handout, handout, which I left in the mailboxes on Friday. It's just hopefully a clearer version of the same thing we presented in the last meeting. In terms of background, many, many years have passed during which homeowners and city staff have discussed if one party or the other was totally responsible for funding the reconstruction of the drainage system. Or whether it was shared responsibility, shared in part due to deficiencies that were found in the original construction. What we ask the council to consider is that while those years of discussion were taking place, homeowners have already unnecessarily been left to pay a significant amount of the dollars to minimize the impact on homes in that area. What's being requested is the reduction in the percentage that the homeowners are being asked to pay. And there's two areas in which that may occur. The first area is the percentage of the overall project, which would have benefited all homeowners, whether they pay upfront or spread it over multiple years. Personally, that's what I think is the best approach. In support of this, we consider the following. Per our original agreement, the city staff offered what they must have felt was a fair sharing arrangement, where we agreed to pay the 42%. When the agreement fell through, we have subsequently been asked to pay 85%. At the last council meeting, we asked for an additional reduction of, on average, 15%. This would result in the owner's share going from 45% to now 70% versus going from 45% to 85%. 70% is still high in, in some aspects, but this would be a fairer division of costs, given that an approved FAD, SAD, has value for the homeowners as well as the city. The city, because the homeowners can't officially do that work. This recommendation also considers the investments made by homeowners to date. The second area is a reduction, or option, is a reduction in, or elimination of the interest rate for owners who pay over time. Not being an accountant, there may be a reason why the city, although a public institution, charges interest in situations like this. The council is being asked to just spread the base amount old, old, over the specified years, which I think is 10. If that is not possible, then it's recommended to reduce the interest rate or don't compound the interest.
Your time is up.
It's up. We'd be thankful for whatever you can do to help us.
Is there anyone else who'd like to talk about this special assessment district? Last call. All right, public hearing is closed. We, at our last meeting, you know, when you asked for a reduction, we went out for bids, and it came out to just over $2,500 a year for 10 years. The bids came back lower than expected. About, they're now just, just over $1,900, so about a $600 a year reduction. There was an additional cost, and I'm looking at our public works director, I think that the city's picking up an extra, some extra engineering costs as well. But I just want to, you know, put that the cost did come back lower than, than what was originally proposed. But council, do you have any, any questions? Councilman Hanks?
Yes, to the chair. Um, I would want Abdul to respond to the original agreement.
So, during the preliminary investigations on this, I had discussed with the residents about a possible share of, you know, the city versus the residents, you know, a closer to a 50-50 share. And that was preliminary discussions. When we came back and, and talked to the finance department and treasury and other departments, it was understood that, that that's not possible. It should, it should really go through the SAD process. So, that, that's how we decided to approach it instead. And that was, that was presented to the residents that this is the approach that we will be taking, is the SAD. And then they did submit the petition after that.
But I guess where, where I'm coming from is, is the, I guess I'm stuck on the words "original agreement." Did we, if we made an original agreement, then went back to our departments, personally went to the departments before we made?
I, I don't know that there was any formal agreement, right. It was, it was something that we discussed, you know, the possibility of, of the city picking up so much. And, and we showed, we showed that in our estimates as well. And, and that's, you know, um, I guess that could be construed as an agreement, but, you know.
I'm just gonna be 100 with you. You can't kneel like that, I'm like, oh, okay, cool. Just saying, that's just me. So, that, that's where I think the concern is coming from.
I get it.
Councilman Brightwell?
I kind of recall, this, this came to the finance committee a couple of months ago. And, and I think we, we seriously stripped this down as much as possible, I think, so it'd be less burden on the citizens. And I, I do recall that everybody around the table, including the, the experts there, the financial people, we came to the, we made sure the interest rate was as low as possible, and nothing, no, we did not burden the, the citizens. And and I, I just would, I just want to make a, make an honest statement that we did, as a group, make this, as, as the burden on the citizens as rock bottom as it possibly, as, as possible. And that, that's just a statement I want to make, sitting through discussions that we had. So...
And the rationale, councilman, for my initial discussions with the residents were, was if you can see on, on the map, there on the, you know, the, the magenta line that's running parallel to Bellwood, that's in the right of way. And so, my initial thought was that the city would pick up the tab on that. However, I, it was clarified to me that because that is only benefiting those residents, it should go through an SAD rather than what I was initially proposing.
Council, do you have any other questions?
One second.
All right. Counsel. Councilman Hoag, do you have a question?
I'm still re, I don't have my own, I have to borrow her confusion.
Um, the, the interest rate that we're charging, it follows standard SAD protocols, is that correct?
I believe it's based on market rates.
Is this a, is this a fixed rate?
Yes.
6%.
6% for 10 years.
So, what do you need on this?
Um, we, well, we would need a motion to approve it.
All right.
And, but I believe that Councilman Hoag has some additional questions she's trying to figure out right now.
What was, what was the total additional cost we had to pick up, the engineering costs?
The engineering cost is estimated at $27,000.
Okay, we took up
So, I have it, hold on. All right, so the city's paying $27,055.
Right, but the director said that our engineering costs went up. It's, that's not broken out, out of that 27. How much did it go up?
I don't recall.
I thought you said we're, their portion went down.
There's no increase in the city's costs, is what?
That was my, that was my, my comment. That's what I thought.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
But their costs went down, like I mentioned, almost just over $600 per year.
So, about $1,900 per year, you said?
That was, that's what it is, 1905 currently. Originally, when we asked them at the meeting on the 29th of September, if they were okay, should we go forward with the per parcel estimate of 25, 27, they said, yes, go ahead. So, the, the costs did come in about $600 lower per year. Over 10 years, about $6,000 total, but that does not include the interest rates.
Oh, okay.
Or does that?
That's including the
It does include the interest rates, okay.
It does.
Yeah, 1905 is with the interest.
Okay. So, we, you know, we're, and we're gonna be taking ownership. One question that, that did come up, I don't know if the speaker got to it, is if there's cost overruns, who picks that portion up?
The, the council will have the authority at the end to approve the final, the, the, the final division. But if there's cost overruns, they, they typically would be passed on to the residents, unless council asks to avoid that.
Okay. Council, what, what say you? This is the standard procedure for all SADS. Generally, when this first came out, I would say I was not very, I was not in favor of the city picking up any portion, because other SADS that I have approved since I've been on council, the city never picked up any portion. It's all been directly to the homeowner and/or business. But I understand that we're dealing with a private sewer line that the city will now incorporate into their, into our system. And we are picking up $27,000 worth of the cost.
We're picking up the engineering portion of it because we want to make sure it's designed and constructed to our standards.
And then it, and if there's any issues going forward, we now have ownership essentially of, of this as well. So...
Yeah, we'll be maintaining this infrastructure going forward.
So, what are we waiting on?
I'm waiting on, on a, on a motion, or if there's additional questions.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It's, and obviously, since I said there is, in this, this is a very fair, honest deal, and I make a motion that we approve the, the SAD at Coventry Woods as presented.
I'll support it.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve confirmation hearing number five for special assessment project SS 1177 as presented. Council, are there any further questions?
Yes, is there any opportunity, I'm doing some of my, I'm doing some analysis. And I'm still have some unreadiness with what was originally discussed and where we are now. If there was never a, any discussion, then I would say, okay, let's go with what's being presented. But when I do my math, 85%, oh, I might not be doing it right, the 25,000, 85% would be like 21,000, of what the current amount is today. But if we look at what was, where we actually are, 85% of that is 16,000.
Just we're picking up more.
We're picking up more, but when I look at the amount that was originally proposed, 42% of that was 10,000. Is there any way we can meet anywhere between the 10,000 and the 16,000 so that both groups can go by amicably? What I'm looking at is the original amount was 25,000. It got reduced down to 19,000 based on the bids. So, if I were to do 85% of the 19,000, that means that is 16,000. Is that right?
The, the, you're talking about the, the final bids came in about 16, about $6,000 less.
Well, forget the numbers. My, my point is, the original number that was given to the homeowners, and they said, okay, I'm saying not the original, the, the revised number that came back from bids.
That's lower.
That's lower.
Yes.
My, my ask is, they thought, and then the amount that, they thought they were going to pay initially. You see where I'm going?
Yes, but they were, I understand there was some communication, but that was corrected before we even started the SAD program. Once, once they were told how the SAD program works, they still went ahead with Once, once they were told how the SAD program works, they still went ahead with it because they want this problem resolved.
This person provided that?
Yes. He was the, he was the speaker.
So I'm confused. It's like he wasn't lying if he wrote this letter.
So we have, we had the same letter, or a different letter, last month. Right, which also said they wanted the city to take on more of it. And remember, we went back and forth, we don't even have the bids yet. And luckily, the bids came in lower, they still said they wanted to go ahead with it because they want, they want it fixed. I, the only thing I do disagree, I understand the concern that there was some communication early on, however, once that was corrected, and they said this is how the process will work, they still went ahead with the, with the process. And I don't.
There's a motion on the floor.
This is discussion.
We can still have discussion.
You're still allowed to have discussion.
Okay. Well, what is the discussion? I mean, you guys are talking, I'm, we getting bits and pieces here.
But that's how a discussion works. You're supposed to listen.
Councilman Hoak.
Well, I was going to say, Councilman Hicks, I was gonna go down that line where you're going.
Yeah.
But then I thought, if the bids came in lower, regardless to where it came in, it's lower. And that I was going to say, can we meet somewhere, whatever, that gets us down. And so that's why I could support the motion. Because it may not be us saying, we're taking it off of our percentage of cost, it's a reduction. And we've got to resolve this and get to a point where both sides are moving forward with it. Plus, we're now taking on, if anything happens, it's all our cost now.
Right, and we didn't take the reduction on the city's side, we gave it all to the residents.
Correct. So it may not be where the discussion was, because again, it's a discussion, is, was it an agreement? We can't resolve that, unfortunately. But it's a, it's a reduction now. And so I was gonna go down that road where you were going, but then I thought, well, if the bids came in lower, regardless to where it came in, it's lower on their side. And we're still keeping with our cost, plus any future costs.
So we do have a motion on the floor by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoak. Is there any further discussion, or ready for a vote?
Hold.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion passes with one, no vote by Councilman Hicks. Hicks. Okay.
All right, so related to that, this is for award of the, of the low bid. We received 15 bids from qualified contractors. The acceptable low bid was $112,183. It was submitted by McComb Pipeline and Utilities Company of Sterling Heights, Michigan. We are asking that council award the SAD project SS 1177 to McComb Pipeline and Utilities Company of Sterling Heights, Michigan, for the low bid of $112,183. And authorize, well, so the funding for the project will be from the Special Assessment Construction Fund, and authorize the mayor and city clerk to execute the contracts.
Councilman Brightwell?
I move that we approve that.
Support.
We move by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoak, to approve the bids for the special assessment project SS 1177. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
One, no vote, motion passes. Councilman Hicks voted in the negative. Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next is a site plan and review request from Brady Sullivan Properties, PSP 25-0006, to renovate the existing addresses of 27200 and 27300 West 11 Mile for multiple family residential use with other potential commercial or accessory uses on the lower floors. All right, welcome back.
Thank you, good evening, counsel, good evening, Mr. Mayor. Ben Kefory with Brady Sullivan Properties, and I'm joined today by Luke Bonner, who's acted as our advisor on the project for the economic incentive package, as well as shepherd through the approval process. So in front of you tonight is the plan that you guys have seen, saw last week. We are market rate developers. This is a full remodel of Tower 200 and Tower 300 into market rate multifamily apartments. Tower 100 is going to stay commercial, and we would look to infill with new commercial tenants. We've worked with Shelley and her team, we've walked the Centropolis Accelerator through, they're interested in space, and we're also interested in other local businesses that would act as retail infill throughout the first floor of the property. Brady Sullivan Properties, we are a developer from New England, we've got 30 years of experience of rehabbing properties just like this. We do a lot of mill buildings, in the past, mill building conversions into apartments. And over the past few years, we've gotten into distressed office properties. And what we do is, we do a full adaptive reuse into apartments and deliver a very amenity-rich living environment for residents. And a lot of the time, we also have a commercial aspect to the properties, so the amenities can also serve the commercial tenants in the building.
Okay.
So I know you saw our videos last week, I know there's a lot on the agenda tonight, so I think we condensed the presentation.
You do have a couple more slides if you want to walk through them, but I, you know, just about your, it's your call. Why don't you go to slide 14? I think that's a good one.
Yeah. So an amenity-rich indoor and outdoor amenity package, pickleball courts, swimming pool.
The numbers are off, I had a bunch of slides.
I noticed, yeah. Okay, I'm sorry.
No worries at all.
So there's one that talks about the apartments.
Yes, and so we're proposing 305 total apartment units. Of that, 85 will be one bedrooms, there'll be 131 two bedrooms, 87 three bedrooms in two four-bedroom apartments. You can see the average rents up there. I will reiterate, we are a market rate developer, and we're aligning with the 120% of Oakland County's AMI for our rent projections.
Okay.
And all of our units mean our minimum dwelling unit size requirement, so that we'll be known to know anywhere is required.
And can you go to the next slide? Thank you. All right. Do you want to, these are some of the amenities you're going to have?
Correct, yep. So this is the outdoor amenity package, again, a swimming pool, outdoor pickleball courts. We do dog parks, we do electrical vehicle charging, we like to draw in tenants and create a, you know, a live-work-play environment for our tenants.
All right.
Do you want me to play the videos? Or do we?
No, we, we saw the videos already. But we do have a site plan review.
Yeah, because this triggered the community impact statement, due to the number of residential units and square footage, it triggered the community impact statement, which then brings the site plan back to council. That was one of the things that was reserved to council when other site plans were delegated. So any large-scale projects of this sort will always come back to council, even if it's a site plan.
All right, so.
There is no public hearing because of site plan approval?
Yeah. All right, so counsel, do you have any questions for the petitioners? We discussed this last week. The, I'm sorry? You can, why don't you ask?
What was the square footage for the three and four bedroom?
Of course. So the three bedrooms, they are about, so in Building 200, which is the middle tower, is 1,157 square feet. And then in Building 300, they're much larger, at 1,474 square feet. The four bedrooms, those are only in Building 200, and those are, those average out at 2191 square feet. So they're very large.
Okay, thank you.
Of course.
You bought those two buildings, you didn't buy the third? Is that?
So, no, we do, we own Tower 100, 200, and 300.
Okay. Right, okay.
Tower 100 will remain office for the time being.
That is correct.
And you'll, I used, it was mentioned, I used to work, so you're going to corner off the access from 100 to 200 internally?
Correct, yeah, there'll be some sort of key card access. However, those tenants will have access to, so, sorry, the commercial tenants, in their lease, we do this with a lot of our commercial tenants, can have access to the shared amenities throughout the property. We use it as a draw to pull in tenants to our commercial properties.
Okay.
Oh, the commercial property can use the pool?
Yes, yes, they could if they, if they wanted to.
That's a draw, I'd love to have a pool where I work.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know how many, how many of our office tenants would actually use that, but it is the goal to create a live-work-play area.
All right, counsel, any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm willing to.
Excuse me, I.
Oh, I'm sorry, the mayor did ask to, to be reckoned, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, ma'am.
I was, I'm really excited about this project. I toured the building with you. We all know that we have too much office space in Southfield, we need to find adaptive reuses, and it's not sustainable to tear everything down. So I'm so glad we found you, you found us. I did have one question that I didn't, I got thinking about. How is the tenant's trash removal being handled?
Yes, so one thing that we've been working on at our properties is we do concierge trash pickup. So once a week, or however many times a week, our, we'll have our maintenance team do trash pickup for residents. We also, you know, have, we'll have trash containers outside, and residents can take care of their own waste. And I know sometimes there's concern about people leaving trash in the hallways, but we do manage these properties ourselves. We hire 24/7 cleaning staff to deliver a very clean living environment.
So where are the dumpsters going to be on this property?
I believe they are out back by the loading dock area, behind Tower 200, in that, off by the patio you'll see right there.
Okay. And, you know, I'm familiar with a couple of apartments in Royal Oak that have the concierge service for the trash. They also charge them something like $75 a month. Are you going, is your plan to charge for the concierge service?
It's a, it's a new amenity for us. I, off the bat, I do not think we would charge for it, no. I think it would be, it would be a service with the property.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions, counsel? Sorry about that. All right, Councilman Banks?
Okay. I move that the site plan review request of Brady Sullivan Properties to renovate the existing buildings at 27200 and 27300 West 11 Mile, office buildings for multiple family residential use and other potential commercial or accessory uses be approved with the conditions as outlined and presented to council, with reference to appearance, coordination, compliance, pedestrian circulation and access, public services, screening, site design characteristics, sightlining, vehicular circulation and access, and other conditions that are presented.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilman Hicks, to approve PSP 250006 as presented, with all those conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much, counsel. I have to run, but Luke is going to take over the economic incentive part of the presentation.
He missed his plane last week, and he's going to miss it this week as well. Keep the police away from him. Good evening, council president, honorable board, Mr. Mayor. The city of Southfield was excited to receive a request from West 11 Management for the redevelopment of this beautiful property. This request is a little different than other requests that we've had in the past. We've typically done Public Act 210, which is a commercial rehabilitation district. And so when this was presented, it is slightly different. Luke Bonner, who represents West 11 Management, is going to go through a short presentation and just talk about the slight differences that are involved. But it does require similar steps, where we establish a district, which we're requesting a public hearing for that, and then the second public hearing, if that's approved, to put the request into the district. And this item will need to be sent to the state treasurer's office by October 31st, and that's why we have several items on the agenda tonight. So we do appreciate everyone's cooperation, and I do apologize, this can be a longer meeting. But Luke, would you like to walk through this?
Thank you, Shelley. Good evening, mayor and council, Mr. Zorn and members of the administration. My name is Luke Bonner, CEO of the Bonner Advisory Group, based in Ann Arbor. Thank you for your consideration this evening for what is called the Oprah Act, that's the Obsolete Property Rehabilitation Act under PA 146 of 2000. This act encourages the redevelopment of blighted and functionally obsolete buildings to support their conversion into mixed-use residential and commercial projects. So just a quick overview, this provides an incentive to rehabilitate these older, functionally obsolete buildings. This statute actually sunsets at the end of next year. However, any certificates approved before then continue on past that time period. I think there is statewide movement and intent to actually have this legislation extended because it's been widely utilized to help rehab and redevelop underutilized sites. In order to be eligible, the project has to meet the definition of functional obsolescence, which was actually concurred and supported by the Southfield City Assessor. It meets the mixed-use definition from the residential development in the two towers and the commercial, and the third tower, even though the third Tower 100 is not actually part of the actual district itself that we're speaking of tonight. And it is in a qualified local unit of government, which is the city of Southfield, is defined as a core community under the Brownfield statute. And essentially, how it works, the property taxable value is frozen for up to 12 years at the pre-development taxable value level. And so when the investment is made in the overall project itself, that increase in taxable value does not impact the property taxes going forward. The red border shows the outline of the two buildings, 200 and 300, that are actually in the requested district this evening, with Tower 100 mainly going to be office going forward, is not within this proposed district. And the potential impact that this incentive will have on this project is based on the post-renovation value of Tower 200 and 300 being approximately $42 million. That number was provided to us by the city assessor. This incentive provides approximately $1.1 million in annual savings, and $13.2 million of savings over the requested 12-year term of the Oprah incentive. And to boil that down as granularly as we can, if there were no incentive provided for this project, the real estate property taxes would amount to about $450 per month. per resident, and with this, um, property tax savings, that will end up being about a hundred and thirty-eight dollars per month. That will allow, uh, Brady Sullivan to keep these rents within, uh, market rates and not have to account for the significant increase in overall property taxes on the property. So even with the, um, property tax freeze, um, the city and the other taxing jurisdictions still continue to collect the real estate property taxes off of the frozen value. And so our estimate is, um, about two hundred and eighty-five thousand, that excludes schools, but two hundred and eighty-five thousand still going to all of the other taxing jurisdictions. And of that two hundred and eighty-five thousand, uh, about a hundred and forty-five thousand still continues to come to the city of Southfield. Again, those are our estimates, actually, not the city's estimates, but we based off, uh, the current taxable value of the property.
And that's with these two properties?
And this is for tower two hundred and three hundred.
Thank you, Luke. Um, I would just like to share that the city is a redevelopment-ready community, which is a state designation, and that as part, as part of our commitment to being a RRC community, we are, um, open to working with developers to offer incentives as best we can to bring development in. As Mayor Seifer referenced, we do have a significant amount of, um, empty office space that really needs conversion, and many of these properties are severely troubled. And without the, the extra incentive, this project most likely would not move forward. Again, we, we work with the city assessor's office to evaluate these prob, you know, these projects and make sure that they're feasible and that the funds are necessary in order to entice this project to move forward. And, um, you know, we're happy to answer any questions. So again, the first phase would be to establish the district and have a public hearing for that, if that's the desire of the board.
Okay. So if you want to have a seat, we will open the public hearing. This is for the Economic Development Initiative. This is a public hearing on the establishment of the obsolete property rehabilitation district under Public Act one forty-six of two thousand for West eleven, number one. Each speaker will have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. I just wanted to say finally, I remember this area when it was first developed, and it was very nice. The building was absolutely amazing, and it was a highly populated area. I remember going way back to nineteen eighty-three when I was on the waiting list to get into Stanford Homes, which is right across the street. I'm in total support of taking, um, previous building, commercial buildings, and redeveloping them into affordable housing. I just want to impress upon the petitioner to not make the mistake that some of the other redevelopers have made. It always starts off being nice, all the amenities are always good, but after a year or two, there seems to be a breakdown in communication. So I want to impress upon this developer to always be in constant contact with your renters. And it's not about being able to raise the rent, it's about being able to keep people in your development and keeping them there for a long time. I think it's a beautiful project, and I'm in total support of the establishment of the obsoles, obsolete property rehabilitation district under PA one forty-six of two thousand and two. I'm in support of it, and I wish them very, very well. And, uh, I like the dog park. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? All right, public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions? Seeing none, Ms. Freeman, I do have one question. This slide was not included in our packets.
Correct.
Okay.
That is absolutely correct, it was not. So we, um, based on the movement of, um, the order of everything, we thought we would try and streamline the presentations.
Okay.
So we made an adjustment.
Could we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Slide as well? Okay. So council, we have item C. Uh, if no further questions, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Economic Development Initiative as presented in item C.
Is there a second?
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the establishment of an obsolete property rehabilitation district for West eleven, number one. Uh, any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second item would then be to, um, have a, a public hearing for the application from West eleven Management LLC for the obsolete property rehabilitation exemption certificate under PA one forty-six, um, at the same property.
All right. This is also a public hearing, correct? So we will, if anyone has any comments about putting this property into the pub, into the district that we just created, you have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. Anytime you have a public hearing, people are able to get up and speak as many times as they want as long as they can offer something viable to the entry that's on the agenda, and it's germane to, uh, what you're saying. I'm in favor of the application because I do think that we need to repurpose a lot of buildings. Our great, small city of Southfield, that's only twenty-six point six or point three square miles, has changed over the forty, last forty years or so since I've been around. And, uh, I'm, I'm happy to see that we have gotten with the times. I just wanna say to the developer, it's gonna take you a little bit, um, to do all of your modifications, hopefully. When you get ready to have your ribbon cutting, just make sure you extend an invitation to the public, the same public that you might want to rent your apartments. So I'm in favor of the application for West eleven Management LLC for an obsolete, obsolete, I'm sorry, property, I don't have on my glasses, rehabilitation exemption certificate under PA one forty-six of two thousand as amended, and hope that you, this body supports this application. Thank you so much, and I'm gonna yield the rest of my time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel? Councilwoman Hoag?
I move that we accept and approve the application, moving the property for West eleven Management LLC to the Oprah District.
So move by Councilwoman Hoag, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the application from West eleven Management for the Oprah certificate as amended and as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. I do wanna remind everybody that, um, the owner will be signing an agreement with the city that they will fulfill their obligations, or it would revoke this, um, PA one forty-six. So I just wanna make sure that, you know, we are on top of that, and we wish them a lot of luck, and thank you, Luke.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next is another Economic Development Initiative. This is a public hearing, um, on a request from Pushpalatha LLC to establish the industrial development district under PA one ninety-eight of nineteen seventy-four as amended at two five three hundred and two five three thirty Telegraph Road.
Yes, thank you very much. This building is what was called the old, um, Raleigh Center, and it was also formerly Credit Acceptance Corporation. And so it's been vacant for quite some time. After the, when the pandemic hit, Credit Acceptance vacated the property. After doing a, a really beautiful renovation to the property, however, they turned it into a single-use facility, creating a very big obstacle for new tenants to move in. So we were very excited to see Anstrom North America contact us. They purchased the property, and Deepak Bala is here to, um, share a short presentation about their company. And again, this, the tool that they're requesting is the, uh, personal property exemption. And so, uh, because this building had not had a district put around the property, again, we'll be asking for two public hearings, one to establish the district and one to place the project in the district, should you agree with the district.
Good evening, uh, president, mayor, and council members. My name is Deepak Bala, I'm the director of facilities and risk management at Anstrom Group of Companies. About two months back, we established a company called Pushpalatha to, the, to purchase the property at twenty-five three hundred dash twenty-five three thirty Telegraph Road, Southfield. And as Rochelle mentioned, that it was owned by, um, by Credit Acceptance at that point in time, but they had sold it in two thousand twenty-four in auction, and there was a private investor from Maryland who had purchased it, but could not do much about it. So we came forward, we were looking for our global corporate headquarters. So we thought that's an ideal place for us. We are currently situated at, uh, two thousand tower in, uh, two thou, town center. So, and we needed ma, much more space for our headcor, corporate headquarters. I'll give you a little bit background about Anstrom NA. Anstrom NA is a leading full-service supplier for automotive and industrial OEMs. It's based in U.S., privately-held company, founded in nineteen ninety-nine. And we still have, uh, currently global headquarters in Southfield, but just nine thousand square feet in Town Center. We have expanded to seventeen companies over four, forty locations across North America, Europe, Asia, and South America. And we employ more than five thousand, five hundred employees worldwide. We are offering a vast portfolio of all part types, including metalformed, which has chassis, driveline, resin-based, which is interior and underbody, electrical, cables and wire harnesses for automotive, foundation, brake systems and pedals and more. We are a vertically-integrated manufacturing capability. We have a global footprint, we have eight facilities in Michigan, in five in Ohio, three Indiana, like that, we have in North America, Mexico, Europe, and China. Our current customers, we honor the relationships with them, we have the big, all the three biggest OEMs, Ford, Stellantis, and GM, as well as Toyota, Mazda, and the, um, and all other, the industrial manufacturers, we pla, uh, provide them with plastic parts. This is the building that we have acquired, and we want to rehabilitate it, or rather, in fact, bring in lot of, uh, jobs here. We are gonna put in a lot of investments into this building, which has been neglected for a few years now. So the Southfield impact, what will have, our global headquarters moving to this building, will add thirty-five more jobs from Pontiac to this facility. Because we have another company which is situated in Pontiac, we are moving them to this particular facility in Southfield. We have twenty new employees coming from Farmington Hills into this building, and we'll retain the twenty-two employees that we have in Southfield right now. So this consolidation and move will benefit over two hundred-plus local businesses, restaurants, and retail locations, and will bring more tax revenue to Southfield. The capital investment that we're gonna be, uh, spending on this particular property, we have tenant improvement of five hundred thousand dollars, furniture and fixture for a hundred thousand dollars. Chillers, they'll be one, one seventy-five ton and two of one fifty-five tons at nine hundred thousand dollars. Hardware, there are a lot of, you know, servers, et cetera, because this will be the data center for all our global operations. So the hardware and related items will be one point four, five million dollars. Software and related items will be one point two million dollars, a total capital investment of four point one five million dollars. Thank you very much, and we are seeking, um, new property tax abatement.
And, um, they are very excited as new owners of the property. They'll be meet with, meeting with the planning department to bring some outlot development as well to the front of Telegraph Road. Hopefully, we can get some wonderful restaurants to locate there. So, um, we are requesting a, an industrial development district, public hearing, please.
Okay. So this is a public hearing, uh, for the Economic Development Initiative, uh, request from Pushpalatha LLC to establish the industrial development district under PA one ninety-eight of one of nineteen seventy-four at two five three hundred and two five three thirty Telegraph Road. Each speaker will have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
It's me again, Mr. President. Pamela Gerald, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. I like the presentation, but I'm still not clear. Is this just for the third, the, say, the third floor, the thirty-third floor? Or is this the developer acquiring the whole property? That's my first question, if it can be answered, if not, I can ask him myself. The second question that I have, are we looking to establish the district for just this particular company as a global headquarters with other companies? Fortune five hundred or three hundred companies in this development? And then my third question, he mentioned the jobs. Will the jobs go to some of our Southfield residents? Or is it going to people that are already in a different location, just coming over here? When you say jobs, our Southfield residents that are listening are thinking of jobs that they may be able to get and apply for. We have, uh, a wonderful school here, Lawrence Tech. We've got some kids that will be graduating, hopefully, on time. So I just need a little bit more clarity, but with that clarity, I could possibly support this. Oh, and the last thing I wanted to ask, are there going to be any LEED-certified changes when they do this project? And if they would consider that and making the building energy-efficient like some of the other businesses that are in Southfield? Thank you so much, and I yield the rest of my time.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this public hearing? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Freeman or to the petitioner, can you answer those questions that were raised?
Absolutely, I'm gonna tackle the first two, and then I'll have, um, Mr. Boa do the, the other two. So the district that we're requesting would be for the entire property. And any new tenant that would locate in the building, much like other districts that we've established, if a new tenant comes in, they're able to, um, submit a request for a PA three twenty-eight, and it would go through the same process, but the district would already be in place. So, um, so again, we're, we're looking, they are looking to occupy a small portion of this massive project, this massive property, but, um, they are going to be listing the property, um, to attract new tenants to fill up the rest of the space. Then, did you wanna talk about if you're hiring, or?
Yeah, uh, hiring will take place, but firstly, we are going to move employees from other cities to this place here. That means from Pontiac, people who are working there, thirty-five people. And then twenty people from Farmington Hills will be moving here. And then as we are in the acquisition mode, like say from, we would- And then as we are in the acquisition mode, like say, from, we would, this company was founded in 1999, and we have grown to over a billion-dollar company now. And every year, we acquire one or two more companies. Like this year, we have acquired KSR Industries. So we will be needing more people, and we will be definitely hiring local talent. And as the lady mentioned, Lawrence Tech is a great institution, and we will be hiring engineers from there. We have a full-fledged design department where we'll be employing design engineers, and I think Lawrence Tech University will be a great resource for us. And, but as we expand, that's why we have acquired, I mean, we are occupying right now half of the sixth floor. The rest half, we have kept for our own expansion, and the rest of the building, we'll be leasing out to the other tenants. And any other questions?
I wanted to know about LEED, like green technology.
Oh, yeah, green technology, yes. Our management and our owner is very much into green technology. We have six locations, industrial plants, where we have put in solar projects, solar panels. Similarly, we are already started looking at solar panels for this building so that it can feed the, if possible, the entire building or a portion of the electric bill will be paid by the solar panels. And also change, converting, if there are older lights, lighting to be converted to LEDs. So these are the two technologies that we'll be implementing.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, do you have any other questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Economic Development Initiative as presented.
Support.
It has been moved by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the Economic Development Initiative to establish an Industrial Development District as amended at 25300 and 25330 Telegraph Road. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, Counsel, now we have the approval or the ask of an application from Anstrom NA LLC for personal property tax exemption under Public Act 328 of 1998 as amended at 25300 and 25330 Telegraph Road. Do you have any other comments before we have the public hearing?
No.
Okay. Thank you. So now we have the application for the personal property tax exemption for this property. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
It's me again, Mr. President.
I'm sorry, please, let's stop the clock for a second.
We don't have a public hearing for that.
We do.
F?
F is a public hearing.
For the application?
So same, same thing we did before, we created the district.
That's right.
And now we're approving the, that, the application.
That's G. That's G.
That's a different company.
That's a different company.
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought that was the same company. Yeah, I got, I don't need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hope. You are very thorough, and you ask very good questions.
Thank you.
Okay. Again, Mr. President, it's Pamela Gero, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. Well, he answered all the questions. Thank you so much for that. And I'm in favor of the application. I just want to remind him that, that the people like the fact that you're coming to the city of Southfield, and we're hoping that this company is a good corporate citizen. We have a lot of exciting things happening. And you may want to consider for your ribbit-cutting or groundbreaking or whatever you're going to do, that you invite the general public, because citizens that know what's happening in their community, they know what's happening as far as new business is coming, could be good ambassadors, because word of mouth is what's really trending now in economic development and in communities. So I'm in favor of the application, and welcome to Southfield. Thank you for all of your global footprints in terms of being LEED-certified and clarifying that you're starting with the sixth floor, and you will expand. And Lawrence Tech having an opportunity to get some of those jobs after the move. So thank you so much. Be a good corporate citizen, and I like this. I'll yield the rest of my time, sir.
Good evening to the Council, the Mayor, and the Administration. First, I'd like to say appreciate all the work that you're doing to continue to make Southfield stable and a good community for the citizens. I have just one question about the application. I would like to know how long will the tax exemption last? What period of time, time period is that?
Okay. Well, we'll answer all the questions after the public hearing.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
That's, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Any other speakers for this public hearing? All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Ms. Freeman, the question was, how many years is?
They asked for a 10-year exemption on their personal property. Again, the city of Southfield receives a certain allocation every year based on a level that was set in 2012. And so this does not negatively affect the city's budget regarding us offering this as an amenity to attract businesses. Again, only certain communities are allowed to offer personal property tax exemptions. It's those core communities that are also eligible to offer the PA 146. And so by offering this, we're able to entice projects to come into our city versus some of our surrounding communities that are not able to offer the same incentive. Again, our goal is to work with assessing to bring, to fill up our vacant office buildings and to attract business to the city.
Counsel, do you have any other questions regarding this application? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve the Economic Development Initiative as amended at 25300 and 25330 Telegraph Road IMF.
Support.
Motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the application for, from Anstrom NA LLC for personal property tax exemption under Public Act 328 of 1998 as amended at 25300 and 25330 Telegraph Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Again, they will be signing an agreement with the city should they vacate the property that they would reimburse the city for the taxes if they were to leave. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Next, we have the Economic Development Initiative for a public hearing. This is a request from Methode Electronics LLC to establish an Industrial Development District under PA 198 of 1974 at 25650 West 11 Mile Road.
Yes. The city of Southfield was very excited to work with the Michigan Economic Development Corporation and Oakland County Economic Development to attract Methode Electronics to remain in the city of Southfield. They're relocating their headquarters from Illinois. They did have a property in the city, but they had been looking outside the city and looking to, to other areas around the country. So we're super excited that they decided to stay in our city. And I'd like to introduce, oh, two people, hello, Gary, Randy and Gary.
Greg Bochard, Vice Chairman, Savills, the Commercial Real Estate Advisor. I'm actually live in Oakland Township.
Okay. Sure thing.
So, good evening. Thank you, everyone, and pleasure to speak with you this evening. It's a great honor to present this. My name is Randy Wilson. I'm Vice President, Investor Relations and Treasury, and also oversee our real estate operations for the company. Briefly about us, there we go. The company's been in existence for 80 years, originally founded in Chicago, did about a billion dollars of revenue last year. Again, another global company, has its roots actually in electronics. So it was original, you know, in the walkie-talkie radio back in 1946, did the lunar landing. You'll see these pictures, pretty impressive. But currently, what we do is, for example, in EVs, like in Stellantis program, we provide the bus bars, electrical connecting, so that's part of our automotive business, as well as switches, as well as ambient lighting. Then on the industrial side, construction equipment, agricultural equipment, we do things like lighting, we do plastic componentry, a global footprint. But Michigan's always been home, right? We've had a sales engineering center here with the automotive side. And then you can see to the right, geography, very well-balanced company, and then the sales by solutions, you can see where we touch. And again, back to that legacy, a really humble beginning, started with $1,000 in Chicago, developed all the way to point to supporting the lunar landing in Apollo, which this is the thing we talked about bus bars, I'll talk about a little bit, and data centers, and we talk about electrical connectivity. We've been doing this for the entire life of the company. Military Arrow, we supported the military programs, continue to do so. And then later on, acquired a host of companies that developed out this global footprint. So very impressive 80-year history, and we're very happy to bring more finance jobs, HR jobs here to Michigan to support this very engineering-led culture first. So as we like to say, we do what we say we're going to do. And so it's very important for us from, one, from a financial results perspective, two, from this engagement here, that what we put on the page, we do what we put on the page. And we're a nimble company, engineering-led, and a really great culture that delivers every day. Now, the heart of the matter tonight, over five years, we proposed 90 new jobs. As mentioned earlier, currently, the headquarters is in Chicago. We do have facilities in Texas, Chicag, in Oklahoma as well, and, but we did want to come back to the attractiveness of Michigan, come back to Detroit, specifically to Southfield, where we did have a very small sales engineering presence. What's very interesting here is now Southfield as a global headquarters will bring the CFO talent, HR talent, operations talent, sales talent here. And you can see a mix, about a third is going to finance, a third to operations, a third to sales. So really excited. I'm personally, you can see here, this was the baseline team at the end of last year, but I'm excited to hire somebody here, develop out a team. I know everyone, we're trying to move very quickly on this because frankly, you know, time is of the essence, that we, you know, attract people here in Southfield. It's a dynamic job market, and we look forward to employing people. I'll hand it over to Greg to talk a little bit about the proposed capital investment.
Methode plans to spend over $3.6 million as part of this project to reconstruct the building and make it their new global headquarters. $2.5 million of that will go towards building improvements. Half a million will go towards materials and equipment, $400,000 towards furniture fixtures and IT, and another $200,000 improving the facade and exterior of the building to, to give it a better curb appeal and presence for the city. And that's it. We're excited for the opportunity to bring jobs back to Michigan and the city of Southfield, and, and look forward to, your thoughts.
Mr. President, before you say anything, this is an updated presentation. It's the same information, but it's a little bit sharper. So I will get this to all the city council as well. And they are asking for a 10-year abatement as well on their personal property. So again, the first step would be to establish the Industrial Development District, and we would request a public hearing for that. Thank you.
You beat me to it, but I was able to, you know, we're trying to follow along.
Similar information.
Yes. Okay. So this is a public hearing and a request from Methode Electronics to establish an Industrial Development District under PA 198 of 1974 at 25650 West 11 Mile Road. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Well, Mr. President, it's me again. Pamela Gero, PO Box 155, Southfield, Michigan, 48037-0155. Well, I am excited to see that that 11-mile area that used to be vibrant at one time appears to be coming back to life, but I do have a couple of questions. Number one, when they were here in our great city of Southfield before, did they have a tax abatement? Did they leave when the tax abatement expired? And is that the reason why they're coming back, making this their global headquarters? My second question is, is your company union? My third question is, will you be inviting the graduates of Lawrence Tech to some of those jobs? And when you say 90 jobs over five years, that's not really a lot of jobs. And considering now with the state of the economy, maybe you need to consider a few more jobs. I'm not sure what I think and believe that you should do, but just something to consider. Will anything that you do be LEED-certified? I happen to be really big on LEED-certified, and there's one to four different levels. That's always great when you're establishing a global print in a city. You want to be concerned about energy conservation. And if you're willing to do all of those things and be a great team or corporate citizen, I could be in support of establishing the district as well as the next one that's coming up, and you'll see me in just a moment, the application. And thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to yield the rest of my time.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Can you answer those questions?
Of course, we happily answer those questions. So again, Methode Electronics has been in the city of Southfield for many years, and they're growing their footprint here, and they have not received any incentives in the past. And regarding local hiring and, and the other questions.
Yeah, all right. That is correct. It's, it's always been Chicago headquarters. We weren't, we never left. It's a true relocation, too, here. Second, around the job side, we are partnering with M E D C on talent. So Lawrence Tech, as well as Oakland County, so a deep partnership there. Three, actually, Greg and I did talk about it in lobby for the, the hearing, was around efficiency. It's a relatively new kickoff for us, but I did mention solar to them because we have a nice flat panel. And then fourth, finally, around the job creation pace, I think, again, it goes to our commitments, right, is that we are, you know, trying to move very quickly, but we didn't want to overpromise and underdeliver. But I would emphasize that, you know, we are moving out of Chicago by next year. And so all these jobs, all the HR, all the finances coming over here, and the numbers you saw on the slide are what, coming from Chicago now to Detroit. So we're very pleased to move quickly. Second, and to bring high-quality, high-value jobs, so, and welcome to engage the community and fully agree that to help revitalize that corner we occupy, so. And we've been in this area, and we look forward to investing in it.
Thank you.
Hey, Counsel, do you have any questions? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve Item H, which is the, I'm sorry, G, the Personal Economic Development Initiative.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the request from Methode Electronics to establish the Industrial Development District under PA 198 of 1974 as amended at 25650 West 11 Mile Road. Any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much. The next item would be to request.
Their application.
Their application to go into the district, correct? And it's a for 10-year request.
Okay.
Thank you.
So this is a public hearing for the application from Methode Electronics for the personal property tax exemption under Public Act 328 of 1998 as amended at 25650 West property tax exemption, under Public Act 328 of 1998, as amended at 25650 West 11 Mile Road. Each speaker will have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
Okay, Mr. President, me again. Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southville, Michigan, 48037-0155. The only question that I have, and I didn't hear Ms. Shelley Freeman mention it, but I'm sure she'll probably say it with the application process, if they don't adhere to the terms of the agreement, will the agreement be rescinded? That's my only concern, if that's the situation and the city's requirement, I would support it as a taxpayer, the application for their business to be relocated over the next year to our great city of Southfield. And thank you, Mr. President, I yield the rest of my time.
Does anyone else like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed.
And yes, they will be, they already have signed an agreement with the city that they would remain at that location, or they would pay the city back for back taxes, should they leave.
Okay. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I'd like to make one statement with respect to the audience that may be listening in. This tax abatement for cities, it's a marketing tool. All cities surrounding, all our peer groups, they also have those marketing tools, and this is the way we attract businesses and try to keep them happy, so to speak. And this comes up every once while, people will ask, why are we doing this? But, Mr. Chair, with respect to that, I move that we approve Item H, which is the Economic Development Initiative, under Public Act 328, as amended.
Support?
All right, we have a motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve the application from Methode Electronics for personal property tax exemption at 25650 West 11 Mile Road. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Councilwoman Brightwell, very happy. Have a great night, thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, next is the Pistons Group.
Thank you so much.
Come on up.
Yes.
All right, this again, is again, another public hearing for tax abatement for the Pistons Group at 3,000 Town Center.
Yes, so, so this is a, we have a one presentation for both companies, to streamline things, right Jerry?
That's correct.
So I'd like to introduce Jerry Raskowski from the Piston Group, and he's going to share a presentation. The Piston Group is currently located in the 3,000 Town Center property, they have not received any incentives from the city in the past, and they are, they enjoy their location in the city, so they're looking to update their facilities, and then they also are attracting the next item, so we're going to do a joint presentation for both of them.
Before you begin, do we have this presentation?
Yes, well, I combined the two, you'll see.
Okay.
Yes, okay.
Your name and address, please.
Jerry Raskowski, Oakland County, and I work for, well, first, good evening, City Council, Mr. Mayor. I lead Government Affairs for the Piston Group. As Shelley introduced, the Piston Group has been headquartered at the 3,000 Tower for several years, we're looking to expand, make modifications to that, while also bringing in the headquarters for Piston Automotive, which is currently at Redford, Michigan, moving that into the 2,000 Tower. As some background on the Piston Group and Piston Automotive, we are solely owned by Vinnie Johnson, who has established Piston Automotive back in 1995, as a automotive supplier here in Detroit. Following his time with the Detroit Pistons, he wanted to give back to the city and region, so he established this automotive manufacturing company, which has seen great success over the past nearly three decades. This is a presentation on, a graphic on Piston Group as a whole, you can see that, starting back in 95, 96, very small company, but has seen tremendous growth over the last 30 years, supplying to many of the major automotive manufacturers, and seen continuous growth over that time. Part of Vinnie's goal in establishing, establishing this company was to give back to the region, and you can see here is a sample of many of the community organizations that Piston Group participates in locally, through volunteer hours, or through donations. Focusing in, so part of Piston Group, there are three different business units, Piston Automotive would be the business unit moving to the 2,000 Tower. This is an overview of Piston Automotive, its size, number of employees, and major customers, And to give a sense of the scale and growth of the company, this is our current footprint for Piston Automotive today, as you can see, we are in five different states, and with 10 different manufacturing facilities, supporting many of the major OEMs. Our new headquarters would see us expand in the 3,000 Tower for the Piston Group, which is the corporate entity over the business units, while establishing a new headquarters for Piston Automotive in the 2,000 headquarters. I don't say it here, but currently Piston Group has 30 employees that would be retained in the 3,000 Tower, and bringing in 170 employees in the, for the 2,000 Tower, taking two floors of the, oh, isn't it in the next slide? I apologize. This is a breakdown of the investment, lease size, tenant improvement, and, and equipment costs. This is for Piston Group, this is in the 3,000 Tower, and, and spend, and then this is for the Piston Automotive, which is in the 2,000 Tower, like I said, taking two floors of that, so 42,000 square feet, and, at roughly a million dollars of improvement to those two floors. And with that, we respectfully request that the council review the presentation and offer a personal property tax abatement for the facilities.
So, just to clarify, so the first public hearing that we're looking for is for the Piston Group. And again, Jerry, how many employees are located there? And it'll be 100 more?
Thirty. Thirty employees today.
How many?
Thirty employees for Piston Group.
And both of these companies manufacture in the state of Michigan, so this tax abatement, this personal property tax abatement is very, for a very small amount of taxes, it's their essential services taxes, because they already are able to receive, they don't pay personal property taxes, so it's just for an extra small dollar amount that is paid by the company. So again, the first request is for their, for the Piston Group to go into the existing district that was established in 2015. So we'd like to have a public hearing for the Piston Group first. Is that clear?
Yep, we're good. All right, this is a public hearing for the application for the Piston Group for tax abatement at 3,000 Town Center. Each speaker will have three minutes, please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southville, Michigan, 48037-0155. Well, everybody loved the microwave when he played for the Detroit Pistons. I remembered when he retired, and he talked about starting this type of business, and I'm happy to see that all these years later, he still has the business, and how much it's grown. I was even more happy when I went to another event in the same building, on the same floor of a company coming to Southfield, that he was in the 3,000 Town Center building. I like the fact that he's going to have 30 employees in total in that building, and I'm in total support. I'm even happy that he's bringing Redford and that business, and those 130 employees over here to the 200 Tower, on the, you know, taking two floors and spending the million-dollar investment, which I'll come back up and say how I feel about the application, but I'm in total support. I think from a little bit of the research that I've done, is Vinnie Johnson does a great job retaining a lot of the employees that works for his company, which is saying a whole lot about the leadership style, and people will work for you if you treat them right, and if you talk to them right. And Vinnie is from New York, I'm not sure if he's from the same borough that I'm from, Brooklyn, New York, but he could have taken this company anywhere, and he chose Southfield. So, I'm in support of it. Thank you, Vinnie, for your business and coming back to Southfield, and I'm going to yield the rest of my time, Mr. President.
Earl Crum, 27126 Pierce, Southville, Michigan. I'm also in favor of the tax abatement for the Pistons, and I'm happy to see that the business is still established and keeping the footing in Southfield, to provide and to continue to occupy space that we really need occupied here. And I'm in favor for the tax abatement for Public Act 328 of 1998, as amended at 3,000 Town Center. Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
I move that we approve Item I, the Economic Development Initiative, as presented.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the application from the Pistons Group LLC for tax abatement at 3,000 Town Center. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. The last item that I have is for the, for Piston Automotive. Again, they would be relocating from Redford Township, which, this was my very first brownfield project that I ever did in the state, and I think it was one of the first projects that happened in the state. So I'm happy that they're following me to Southfield, but they're looking to bring 170 jobs to the 2,000 Town Center. Again, it is, the district was established in 2015, and so they, the application is a request for 11 years to coincide with the term of their lease, and both of these companies will be signing agreements, should they leave, that they would reimburse the city for any back taxes. So again, we'd like a public hearing.
Do you have anything to add, sir?
No, I thank you for consideration.
All right. So we have another public hearing, this is an application from Piston Automotive LLC for a tax abatement under Public Act 328, as amended at the 3,000 Town Center, or 2,000?
3,000.
3,000 Town Center?
3,000.
2,000.
2,000, okay, there's a typo in our paper. It's supposed to be 3,000, it's supposed to be 2,000.
2,000?
Yes.
Okay. Was the previous one approved at 2,000 or 3,000?
The previous one was approved at 3,000, this one is now at 2,000 Town Center. All right, so this is a public hearing, please give your name and address for the record, each speaker will have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Pamela Gerald, P.O., Box 155, Southville, Michigan, 48037-0155. I'm glad that you caught the, the error on the agenda, that it was not the 3,000 Town Center for the application, that it was the 2,000 Town Center. I don't know if you need to say that it's two floors in the 2,000 Town Center, but, you know, the million-dollar investment is good. I would like a clarification point from the petitioner. It was mentioned 130 employees will be taking over two floors in the 2,000 Town Center, but he mentioned 170 jobs. So does that mean that the Pistons Automotive LLC will be open to consider hiring for another 40 jobs? And if so, will Southfield residents be considered for those jobs, or, as you will always hear me inquire about, graduates and students from Lawrence Tech, through some kind of apprentice program, or just an outright hiring with the Pistons Automotive Group? So if that can be clarified, I would support this as a taxpayer, the application process. Thank you, Ms. Shelley Freeman, for indicating that they've signed an agreement, if they don't adhere to the agreement, that the deal would be rescinded, and I will yield the rest of my time, and thank you again to Mr. Vinnie Johnson. Thank you, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, the public hearing is closed. If you can please clarify?
Yeah, happy to clarify those points. It is removing 170 jobs, if I had said 130, I had misspoken earlier. For, and to the point of Lawrence Tech, Piston has collaborated with Lawrence Tech on previous projects, and will likely continue to, and of course, will consider Southfield residents for any open jobs going forward.
Okay, and then, there just was a typo in the title, but looking at the resolution and all the other material, it does say 2,000 Town Center, so we are, we are good. Counsel, do you have any questions? Ms. Brightwell?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move that Item J, the Economic Development Initiative, the application for Piston Automotive Group LLC, tax abatement per Public Act 328 of 1998, as amended at 2,000 Town Center.
Support?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the application from Piston Automotive for a tax abatement under PA 328 at 2,000 Town Center. Any other questions, counsel? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you so much for everything.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Pace. All right, next is a rezoning and a special land use, PZR 24-0013 and PSLU 24-0021.
Just, I know this was covered at the study meeting, so I'll go over it quickly. Eagle Landscaping, which is located on Loser, has acquired the two properties in question along 8 Mile, and are looking to expand their operations onto that site. The property right now is split-zoned, light industrial, and B3 general business. The remainder of Eagle's site is I-1, which is a, is the zoning that allows landscape contractor and yards as a special land use, so the rezoning to I-1 is necessary for the special land use approval to be possible. So, just looking at this site, you can see that, you know, half the site's I-1, half the site's B3, and then the remainder of their site is I-1 industrial, the matched buildings, regional mixed use, which does include businesses like this one proposed. Just to clarify, here, the green area is their current site, the red area is the site that's being rezoned. It does say 22106 and 108 on some of the slides, because when we first started this process, it was two parcels, but they've now combined them, which is why the agenda now just says 22108, because it's now one parcel under that ad. the agenda now just says twenty-two, one-oh-eight, because it's now one parcel under that address. There was a little bit of mix-up in the way the project proceeded. There was some concrete put down ahead of permitting and some stormwater corrections need to occur as a result. That was what held it up at the Planning Commission for an extended period. They wanted to see a potential solution for that. They now have a design solution for that that the city engineers looked at and is at least conceptually feasible. Final approval on the stormwater system will obviously be with the city engineer in permitting and construction. They are gonna have some of those bin blocks. They did work with us. Initially, the project needed like five waivers from the zoning board. They pulled those bin blocks back and reoriented them to screen them from the road, which eliminated several waivers. So the, the, the Planning Commission did eventually recommend approval of the project. Just showing their stormwater management, it's gonna be an underground system that's gonna have retention underneath the parking lot in front of the building, the part that hasn't been built yet. And just the site as it is posed, there's gonna be a green belt in the front with landscaping similar to what they have on Eight Mile and Loser on the rest of their frontage, showing some of the photos at the top right there. So it'll be a similar treatment on all of their frontage on Eight Mile and Loser. If you remember what that property looked like when they started, it was a really nasty gravel lot. There was a couple, there was a derelict building on the front of the building they tore down, refaced that building, and there was a small derelict building on the other parcel that they also took down. So they really have cleaned up the property quite a bit, and when this is completed, it will look substantially better than when it started. Some photos of the elevations of the building and floor plan, mostly open layout. Warehousing is part of the landscape contracting business. And I believe the petitioner is president, they've come forward.
If you just give your name and address, please, and then you can add in any, anything you think we need to hear.
Yeah, no problem. My name is Chad Holdwick. I'm with the Umwore Group. Address is four-nine-two-eight-seven West Road, Wixom, Michigan. The civil engineer on the project.
Yeah, Ron Eagle from Eagle Landscaping, fifteen ninety-four Pleasant Valley Road, Brighton.
Okay. Anything you'd like to add?
I don't think so. Mr. Payson did a great job. If there's any other questions about stormwater, it was a conversation that was part of Planning Commission. If there's any questions on that, we can go further, but it kinda gets in the weeds a little bit, but we're more than willing and will, uh, open to talking about that.
All right.
Thank you.
So we'll have the public hearing, and then we'll see what questions come up. All right, this is a public hearing, PZR two-four dash zero-zero-one-three, a request to rezone one point six-one acres of land at two-two-one-zero-eight West Eight Mile Road from light industrial to general business and from general business to light industrial.
The rezoning is from light industrial and general business to just industrial.
Got it. Okay. All right. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President. Pamela Gero, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. I'm totally in favor of the request to rezone. If you drive down the street and you come up to their business, the fence alone just kinda tells you what they consider to be a good corporate citizen and how they feel about their business. I ride by there all the time, and I covet that style of fence that they have, and I don't know if that's the right word to use, because that would be a sin and one of the commandments that you should never covet, but the fence is absolutely beautiful. The nostalgic vehicle that they have in the front is very cute, very nice. It mimics a piece of artwork, but they do a great job, and any company that comes to Southfield that's willing to stay here and improve their business, enlarge their business, and for that type of business, that would normally not be what you would consider tidy, it is a very neat business in their parking lot, very visible. So I'm in favor of the rezoning, and thank you to Mr. and Mrs. Eagle for staying on that corner for a long time, and again, I like the fence. And I yield the rest of my time, Mr. President.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this item? All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Counsel, do you have any questions?
I'd just add a few questions.
Yes, Councilwoman Haynes?
You did say, say that the fence, the same type of fence is going to be all the way around the front even, yeah.
Yes.
And I like the, I was just there last night and this morning too, and the art structure is very, very nice and very attractive, and I think even when you bring that fence all the way around, it'll just add to that, and I think that's just, it just looks really great. Just kinda takes away from the whole part that's there, and it's gonna be really good. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions? I had one. Looking at the aerial view, where you have the red and green borders.
Green, let me slide back a couple slides.
Yeah.
There you go.
So I see the proposed addition, and I see the existing landscaping site. There's, like, right in the middle, to the left of the red box.
Yeah.
What is that?
That is, those, those two parcels are two other businesses. I don't remember off the top of my head. They're both occupied, but I think one of them is Artistic Landscaping, I think is in there, and I forget what the other one is.
We got, uh, Ristico is just right next to me there, just west of me, and then you got Artistic that's just west of you.
Yeah, so they're wrapping around a couple of other businesses. Those businesses have access from Eight Mile currently.
Okay, and did they have any complaints at the public, at the Planning Commission?
No. I, they were all given notice multiple times, and I actually did speak to Mr. Conja of Artistic, and he had no concerns.
And there's also letters, yeah, they sent letters.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Is that still Tony Conja?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Artistic Landscaping is that, deeper parcel in between the two grounds.
All right, counsel, any other questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion. Mr. President? Councilwoman Banks?
I move that PZR twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-three, the rezoning request for property located at two-two-one-oh-eight Eight Mile Road, rezoning from IL Light Industrial to B-three General Business.
No, it's, I made the same mistake. It's light industrial and B-three.
And B-three, I'm sorry.
To light industrial.
To.
Just to industrial.
Light industrial, be approved.
Support. All right, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve PZR two-four dash zero-zero-one-three as presented. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number eighteen eighteen for PZR twenty-four dash zero-zero-one-three.
Oh. All right, I did not hear you, I'm sorry. Uh, it's been moved by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to introduce ordinance number one-eight, one-eight. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, and now we have a special use request by Eagle Landscaping to expand their operations onto the adjacent property at two-two-one-oh-eight Eight Mile Road now that it is all one parcel. Anything to add?
I don't believe so. I think we've been clear about what the proposed items are. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that.
We do need to hold a public hearing on this item.
Oh, I'm sorry.
All right, this is a public hearing for PSLU two-four dash zero-zero-two-one, special use request for Eagle Landscaping and Supply to expand their operations. Every speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Mr. President, again. Pamela Gero, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. I'm in total support of the special land use. I think it's great that they're going to be putting the fence around encompassing the whole yard. The fence is just spectacular to just even look at it, but I wanted you to go back to one of your previous things. You had it moved by Dan Brightwell, and in the audience, we couldn't hear or we're not clear if the support was Yolanda Haynes or if it was Coretta Hoag. So you might wanna go back for clarity for that, but I'm in total support of the special land use. Thank you so much, and I yield the rest of my time, sir.
Earl Crum, two-seven-one-two-six Pierce, Southfield, Michigan. I have a couple of questions that I'd like to ask. Is this for?
Please, please address the council.
Is this business wholesale or retail, or both? And will it provide services? Reason I ask that, because I look around and I see that all of us who own our homes in Southfield, most of us need some kind of landscaping tools or some kind of landscaping products, and sometimes we need services to our tools as well, especially snow blowers and lawnmowers. So I would like to know, do you, will you provide services or just sell parts for wholesale and retail? I'm in favor of the, uh, the business being here in Southfield. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any one else who'd like to speak on this public hearing? Okay, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Eagle, would you like to respond to the question about, do you sell retail, wholesale, no sale?
Yeah, we do them both. Homeowners come in there every day and buy stuff. We deliver to them. We go out and we work in Southfield at homeowners' houses, so, yeah.
Okay.
And we're wholesale too. Landscapers come to us.
All right, and then Councilwoman Haynes?
Do you sell equipment? Uh, do you sell any, you just mulch and?
No, just, just landscape materials.
Landscape material, that's what I thought. Just wanted to clear that up, just in case. And you have a website presence as well, right? Okay, just want, just for the public to just state that.
Okay, and then, um, the rezoning, I know there was confusion, but for item K, it was, the motion was by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Haynes for that and the, and the ordinance. All right, so, um, Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to approve PSLU twenty-four dash zero-zero-two-one, the special use request by Eagle Landscaping and Supply Company to expand operations of Eagle Landscaping and Supply Company at two-zero-seven-seven-nine Loser onto adjacent property at two-two-one-zero-eight West Eight Mile Road, Southfield, Michigan, parcels two-four dash three-three dash four-seven-six dash zero-six-zero.
Support. It's been moved by Councilwoman Haynes, supported by Councilwoman Banks, to approve PSLU two-four dash zero-zero-two-one as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
And thank you for being here in Southfield for so long.
Yeah, thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
All right, the next is a zoning public hearing for a zoning text amendment, PTZA-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-five. All right. Take us through it.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just a quick summary on this, I know you heard about it last Monday, kind of as part and parcel of the project to replace a bunch of the right-of-way fences that the city has put in and is now replacing. We were looking for a way to try to make sure that they would last their full lifespan and remain in good condition by making sure the maintenance around them was better. Obviously, we can control what happens on the right-of-way side of the fence. It's really about what happens on the public, private side of the fence that the ordinance, what zoning ordinance regulates.
I don't wanna stop you, but can you move that mic? The, the other one, I think it's picking up some feedback and ringing a little bit. Thank you.
So at the request of Public Works and the administration and codes, they, they really needed some tools to be able to have clear rules about what was allowed on and next to these fences. So we were asked to, I tried to put together a relatively straightforward amendment. This is a slide just kinda going over all the areas that are being, the fences are being replaced, but I'm sure counsel's fairly fully aware of what areas these are occurring in. It is consistent with our sustainable Southfield two-point-oh goals, always something we check when we're doing a zoning amendment to make sure it's consistent with the master plan. It fits a lot of the points about quality of life, aesthetics of the community, maintenance and upgrade of infrastructure and facilities. The amendment itself is pretty straightforward. We have a definition of public road right-of-way fence, because you need to define the terms to know what you're regulating. And then the actual standards for approval, which these are the regulations, are really just going down to, to really boil it down to the basic, like, keep a three-foot clear of this fence so that it can be properly maintained, and we don't have things leaning on it or growing in it or growing on it. Don't modify the fence, you know. It's really just, this fence is being installed professionally, it is a commercial-grade fencing. If properly maintained, it should have a fairly long lifespan, and what we're trying to do is protect those invested taxpayer dollars in the fencing and give clear standards that code enforcement can then enforce against. Literally, most of these standards, if you took a picture, you could prove the violation, which is always a good standard these days. That's more or less what the courts expect to see. So if you can get a picture of the violation, you've pretty much proven it. So if you look at it, it's just vegetation three-foot clear, outdoor storage of any sort three-foot clear, not really supposed to be much outdoor storage anyway. Don't attach things to the fence, don't modify the fence, and then if you're gonna have any kind of parallel fencing within the yard, like a chicken coop or one of those other items, at least three-foot clear so that the landscaping along that fence can be maintained properly. The problem, if you put a fence too close to another fence, it's real hard to get the stuff in between the two fences. So that three-foot clear means you can get in there with a weed whip or a lawnmower and do what needs to be done, or even pruners if that's, if that's what's occurring. So really, it was just to kind of make it clear what the expectations are on that. It is, we do require a public hearing for a zoning text amendment on this as well.
Okay. So this is a public hearing for PZTA-two-five dash zero-zero-zero-five, a zoning ordinance text amendment, amending Article Four, Section five point three-seven-one, fence regulations to add the definition and regulations related to the publicly installed and maintained fencing along public road right-ofways. Each speaker will have three minutes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Mr. President, it's me again, Pamela Gero, PO Box one fifty-five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven dash zero one five five. Just a couple of questions. Wanted to clarify the actual color of the fence. Is it more of a cream or ivory color, or is it going to be tau?
You have to stick to the, this is the text amendment, not the fence installation itself.
Oh, okay, the text amendment, okay. I'm in favor of that, but based on the presentation and what he was talking about when he said not putting anything on the fence, Oak Park and Ferndale has started this aggressive campaign to replace the wooden fences with the composite fences that that's made of, and because you have those columns on the top, I have seen in some communities where they are allowed to put like Christmas bowls on there for the decoration. So with this text amendment, would that be allowed? And then I do wanna ask you about the color of the fence, and the correction that I was asking you to make was for item I. Was it Ms. Hoag or Ms. Haynes? Thank you, and I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak to this zoning text amendment? All right, seeing none, public hearing is closed. Mr. Payson?
Yeah.
Based on, based on what I'm reading, they can't put anything, even Christmas lights.
Yeah, technically, no modifications or attachments. Unfortunately, you can get into a lot of discussions of how much things weigh or how much stuff you can mount on there, and in the end, we thought the cleanest was just to say, don't mount anything on the fence. Because sometimes if people hang lights, they actually put things on the lights to hold the lights. They'll screw things into the fence, they'll put hooks on the fence. Well, all of that punctures the material and potentially compromise its long-term viability. I think we really wanna try to keep that consistent, attractive, high-quality fencing along those right-of-way, just to kinda keep that Southfield standard up, and, and I, I get it, like, it may seem, but you have to understand, code enforcement is difficult. It's a difficult job. If we don't give them clear standards, they're gonna have a harder time enforcing it. Also, like, they do tend to focus on nuisances in fact instead of nuisances. Also, like, they do tend to focus on nuisances in fact instead of nuisances per se. So they're going to prioritize you doing something that damages the fence or are you hanging light LED lights on your fence? You know, I think you can trust code enforcement with their limited resources to act intelligently in terms of enforcement, understanding the goal of this ordinance is preservation of the structural integrity of the fence.
Okay. The fence color is a, the one that was circled in the...
Yeah, it's like a little...
It's like a brownish tan color. Um, and they've actually, they started along Webster, and I think they're starting on Twelve Mile this week, I think we were told. So they've already started with the removal and installation of the old fence.
Yeah.
So this is going forward. Council, you have any questions?
I do, I have a couple of questions. Since you say they already started, um, the process before they put the fence down, how far are they digging or are they uprooting anything that's in the ground to make sure that that's not something that's going to grow up?
Yeah, my understanding is they're actually doing full grubbing. They're like clearing the fence line.
And how much of that, um, will they keep for pictorial sake, for future use, for somebody to say, well, this was already here? Or...
Yeah, they're clearing it as best they can because the, the goal is to actually have it cleared and maintainable enough so it doesn't damage the fence again. If people don't maintain their property, those stuff will grow along that fence line again.
Okay, because it's such a long fence, who's going to monitor the putting things on and off and that type of thing to know because, you know?
I mean, I know that they're, they're going to be keeping up monitoring for maintenance purposes to Public Works, but code enforcement will also be in the neighborhoods, as they always are, looking for violations that are causing problems.
And did we discuss, or is it appropriate to ask, about the different venues where the public is going to get the information? Because the last thing we want people to say is, I didn't know, I didn't read it, no one told me.
So we said that they were going to hand-deliver letters to anyone who is affected by this.
They've already done notices about the fence replacement. They're going to use that same distribution mechanism to get outward on the ordinance as well. Like, it's going to go out as, now your new fence has been installed, this is the standard maintenance.
So, so they are, they've been clearly noted and they're understanding that they can't plant anything that's possibly to grow like a morning glory, to grow ivy connecting to that fence at any time?
Yeah, that's basically, the landscape has to be kept. But no woody vegetation, which would be your vines, your shrubs, your trees within that three-foot. Because even like a tree trunk, if it's too close, will push out the, will push out the fence. You can see it in some of the old fences where the fencing is actually bowing because the vegetation is pushing it outward. So it's, it, I get it, it means, but the thing is, a three-foot setback to shrubs or trees is really not that far. It's, it's enough to get in there and keep the maintenance up. It's not like we told them they couldn't use their rear ten feet of their yard.
What's the warranty or the long-lasting on those type of fence? And what's a composite?
Yeah, I would have to defer to engineering on that, but I think I was told as a commercial-grade product, it was supposed to have like a twenty-year lifespan.
Twenty years?
Ideally, minimum.
No bending or bowing in this...
Yeah, this is not, this is a grade up from the residential stuff that you typically see sold at Home Depot and Lowe's. This is a commercial-grade product.
All right, and all that information is going to be given to the residents as well?
Yeah, I know engineering has communicated a great deal about the actual fence itself. Once this ordinance passes in his law, then we will direct that information to the residents who were serviced with new fences as well.
Okay, and, and they'll be notified when they're coming in their area before they come and...
Oh, they're already doing that. Like, they, before they come take the old fence down, they do a door hanger, the door knocking, and multiple, three, three points of contact before they take the fence down.
And about when should it be done for the entire area?
Hmm?
When should it be done for the entire area?
That, I don't, I know it's going to take, I believe it was going to, maybe Mr. Zorn knows, I think it's going to extend into next spring.
Correct.
Yeah, because I know the ground is going to be freezing real soon.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, they're going to cease in a minute.
Okay, thank you.
It's a lot of fencing.
Yes, it is.
All right, any other questions on this item? All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the zoning ordinance text amendment, PZTA twenty-five dash zero zero five, amending Article Four, Section five dot three seven dash one, fence regulation to add a definition and regulations related to publicly installed and maintained fencing along public roads right, public road rights-of-way.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Ho, uh, Haynes, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve...
That was, that was Banks.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's getting late.
That's why I repeat, that's why I repeat it.
Thank you.
All right, we have Councilwoman Haynes made the motion, Councilwoman Banks supported it, for PZTA two five dash zero 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 five. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries.
I'd like to make the ordinance to, I mean, a motion to introduce ordinance number eighteen nineteen.
Support.
That was a motion by Councilwoman Haynes, supported by Councilwoman Banks, heard at that time, to introduce ordinance number one eight one nine. All those in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed? Motion carries. All right. That concludes all of our public hearing and site plans. Next, we move on to ordinances. We have one ordinance to enact.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I move that we enact ordinance number eighteen seventeen, PTZA twenty-five dash zero 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 four, text amendment to the Title B zoning and planning, Chapter forty-five. And this is with reference to provide a definition for adult day services and add the use to the useless for the RM, RMM, RMU, OS, RS, RC, B two and B three zoning districts.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to enact ordinance number one eight one seven as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm sorry? It's never on, but it... Not, because we, we're just enacting it, we approved it last meeting, so now we're acting it. All right, next, we have three items under council. We have two travel expenses, which we will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we, I'm sure we did all three of them at once, or...
There's only two travel expenses. You can do those together if you'd like.
Travel expense report for Mr. Hicks and also travel expense reimbursement for Ms. Hoag.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilman Brightwell, supported by Councilwoman Haynes, to approve the travel expenses for Councilwoman Hicks and for Councilwoman Hoag for attending the MML Convention in Grand Rapids in September. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then, council, we have to appoint a delegate and an alternate for the National League of Cities to represent us at the National League of Cities City Summit that will be in Salt Lake City, Utah. So I guess, does anyone...
Who's going, Charles?
Is anyone going? That's the first question. And if no one's going, then we won't have a representative. But is anyone planning to go?
Charles is going. I want to get a little...
And I motion that we appoint Councilperson Hicks as our delegate to the National League of Cities.
Support.
Do we have an alternate at all?
Well...
Anybody else want to go? You want to?
Don't want to go, no, I can't go, thank you.
I didn't want to, I didn't want to Dan. I want, it had to wait till after.
You know, if, 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 um, well, if you don't go, you don't go, but...
Right.
Okay. If you want to...
I, I also will nominate Councilwoman Haynes as the alternate.
Seconded that, was that Tan?
Yeah.
All right, so we have a motion by Councilwoman Ho, supported by Councilwoman Brightwell, to appoint Councilwoman Hicks as the delegate and Councilwoman Haynes as the alternate for the National League of Cities. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
That's a lot of muddling. Can you tell them?
Again, I'd like to ask that the public, if you have conversations, to please go out into the hall. All right, council members, Councilman Brightwell, do you have any comments for this evening?
No, other than my veterans, I, I wish that all veterans, um, apply for their benefits with the VA and it's a record that only forty, only forty percent of the veterans actually utilize the VA, VA benefits. So their, their benefits there, so all kind of benefits, education, medical, burial. So there's a lot of things that you earned as a veteran. Thank you.
Councilman Haynes?
Yes, I just wanted to make a few announcements. One is, I think we will not be here for the, uh, the next book sale at the library, the Friends of the Library Annual Book Sale, the first week in November. And the dates are listed on the library's website. And also, I had the opportunity to attend the Semco General Assembly, and I wanted to give a special acknowledgement to our city planner, Terry Crowe, who did an excellent presentation representing Southfield. It was really nice, um, the bags that we have went over very well. And I think we're going to get a lot of people that are going to represent Southfield with showing those bags. And I think that's an excellent idea and a great way to further exemplify how great our city is. And I'd like to just, um, just say, it's, um, good to know that we have ambassadors up here that represent our city very well at all the events that we attend, just like we had an excellent event today. And we've had so many nice events that we all try to make it to and just really support. And I want to really special, uh, say especially to my colleague, Coretta Hoag, for her persistence in the lighting. And really want to make that clear to our residents that there are things that happen in our city that take some time. It may not look like we're doing anything, so to say, as some people put it, but this shows, it shows the diligence, the persistence, the accountability and the responsibility we have up here to get things done. And she's done that, and so has many others up here. And I'd like to say to continue doing it, Nancy with the dog park is one of the thing, and Charles with the, um, and other people that work with him with the pool. So we are doing the work up here, we do care. And I just wanted to say hats off to you all for being the true ambassadors and doing the excellent work to represent our residents very well. Thank you, and you, Ari, too, as well. And then, and Dan, I didn't want to leave you all out. You know what you do too. Thank you.
Uh, at all?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Councilman Hicks?
That's the next evening.
Councilwoman Banks?
Thank you, I think everything I was going to say has been said. Thank you.
All right, Councilwoman Hoag?
Two quick things. I'd like to give kudos to our health, city health services manager, Melissa Medici, and Roger Guzby of the Southfield Substance Prevention and Education Coalition for their, uh, presentation on November, I'm sorry, October twenty-second, the gas station initiative. They did that at our field zone with, um, a number of teenagers. I'm sorry, they were younger teens.
Yeah.
And they were going over the, um, dangerous products that are sold at our gas stations just on the counter. It was a great discussion for which we would really like to see that presented in the schools because more and more kids need to hear that. And we also had a guest there, Justin Daniels, from the Alliance Coalition for Health Communities. So I just want to give kudos to them. Melissa did a great presentation. Appreciate that. And to Parks and Recs for the Beechwoods ribbon cutting, excellent, um, event. Cold, but it's a beautiful, uh, park, new shelter and new areas for the children. I'm sure they're going to love it next year. And then, lastly, I'd like for us to just keep in our thoughts and prayers the people of Jamaica, Eastern Cuba, and Bahamas behind Hurricane Melissa. If it hasn't hit yet, it's about to hit, so that we lift them up in our prayers for safety. That's all, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Also, just wanted to quickly mention that, um, this week, October thirtieth, Culvers will be celebrating its grand opening of its first Southfield location. They're already building their second. Uh, this one is on Southfield Road, right across the street from Home Depot. Every time I drive by there, that place is busy. So, so people must love it, it's great. We're, they're, they wanted to, um, you know, um, do a soft opening before they got a grand opening. The address is two nine nine seven zero. It's Wednesday, October thirtieth at eleven AM. Will be a, uh, a grand opening. I also want to thank my council colleagues, um, Councilman Brightwell, Councilwoman Haynes, and Councilman Hoag. We were, yesterday, we were, um, giving out over five thousand pieces of candy at the trunk-or-treat hosted by the Southfield Police Department. We were all in costume. It was, um, a very fun but tiring event. We were running out of candy right and left. You know, luckily, some other areas and departments were willing to lend us some candy and donate to our cause. But it was, it was a lot of fun, and I just want to thank the, the police department and all those who were in, uh, who participated, who planned it. It was, it was a very nice turnout.
Fun, nice candy.
I forgot to mention it, remember, and the mayor was unrecognizable.
Yes, there were several people who walked by the mayor several times and could not recognize him. I also want to thank my wife for participating, as well as, um, Councilwoman Haynes's granddaughter, giving out candy, that was a, they had a lot of fun doing that, so... Also, we mentioned at the beginning of our meeting, um, we did a moment of silence for our colleague, Dr. Cruz, who unfortunately passed away last week. Um, I did speak with our administration and our Community Relations Department. They will be putting out information regarding memorial service that is scheduled for next week. They were trying to put the final touches and some, some additional biographical information about Councilman Cruz together that should go out, I was told, tomorrow morning. But again, it is, it is a loss for, for the Southfield community, as well as our thoughts and prayers are with his family. Thank you. Mr. Mayor?
I would just add that, that the public viewing for Councilman Cruz will be November second, from three to six PM, for...
Is your mic on?
Speaker.
Is your mic on?
I'll, I'll start again. I would just like to add that the public viewing for Councilman Cruz will be Sunday, November second, from three to six PM at the Chlora Funeral Home, East Detroit location, that's at fifty-eight oh one East Seven Mile Road in Detroit. And then the funeral will be the following, um, day, Monday, November third, family hour from ten thirty AM, and the funeral service will be at eleven AM. And that will be held at the Second Ebenezer Church at fourteen six oh one De Quinder, uh, in Detroit.
Anything else, sir?
No.
City administrator?
I have no information this evening.
Okay. All right, Madam Attorney?
Evening, council. I think I have several things. Uh, the first one was the introduction and requesting that council adopt the ordinance that was presented to you all at the committee of the whole. This was in regards to the signs in the hotels and motels, um, that are going to be required, well, should already be licensed. Um, I've been working with the individual in the clerk's office, um, so those letters should go out at the end of the year. And I will work with her to make sure that this is included. But for this evening, I'm requesting, uh, that council, um, with the introduction of this ordinance, also adopt, uh, this ordinance, signs in hotels and motels that would educate people about the human trafficking situation.
So first, we're going to, we have to approve the ordinance, and then we have the ordinance number? We have, we would approve the ordinance and then approve the ordinance number? Is that correct? Or introduce? Okay. Yes, Councilman Banks?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Um, I move that the proposed ordinance amendment for hotel and motel licensing requirements, um, be approved.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to approve the proposed ordinance amendment for hotel and motel licensing requirements. Any other questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. President?
Yes.
I move that we introduce ordinance number eighteen twenty, proposed ordinance amendment for hotel and motel licensing requirements.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to introduce ordinance number one... We have a motion by Councilwoman Banks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to introduce ordinance number one eight two zero. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. All right, and then, madam attorney, we have the four items that we pulled off consent, items number OPQ and R.
Yes, that's correct, there were four items that were litigation, that we were asking city council approval for the city attorney's office to take the measures necessary to defend the city in these matters.
Through the chair?
Yes.
I move that we go into closed session to discuss those items for pending litigation.
And if we're gonna go into closed session, then this Open Meetings Act section would need to be-
Right. So, we have, so it's not pending litigation, because these are, there's none yet? These are considered information or records subject to attorney-client privilege under state and federal statutes, MCL one five dot two six eight H, specifically, MCL one five point two four three one G. We can, under the MCLs that I, that I just listed, that are for information or records subject to attorney-client privilege.
And that would include a written opinion, which I would be presenting in closed session.
All four, yes, they're all four for information only. We can go for MCL one five dot two six eight H, specifically, MCL one five dot two four three one G.
Support.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Hicks, supported by Councilwoman Hoag, to go into a closed session for the information or records subject to attorney-client privilege with the MCLs that I mentioned earlier. Madam clerk, we need a roll call vote, please.
Shouldn't we finish with the rest of the agenda before we go into closed session?
There's, there's nothing else on the agenda.
Well, we haven't heard from the clerk, maybe she's got an update or something.
Oh.
I think before we go into closed session, we got an election coming up. Information.
I have, I have information, so can we come back in the open before we do it?
We can suspend the vote for now. So, there's, there's been a motion, and it's seconded. If we, do we need to vote and then, and then do a recon? Okay, so we have a vote on the floor right now to go into a closed session, but the city clerk has an announcement to make.
No, I was gonna say, go ahead, I thought you were gonna say something, since, can we take, we could take the roll call and know that we have that on the record, and then we have one announcement, and it's my understanding, then we would go into the closed session.
Okay, thank you. So let's have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, Councilwoman Banks?
Yes.
Councilwoman Brightwell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Ho?
Yes.
Councilwoman Haynes?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hicks?
Yes.
Council President Amanda Baum?
Yes.
We'll be going in a closed session after my announcement.
Yes.
So clerk's announcement at this time would be, in regards to absentee ballots request, we can issue and mail absentee ballots until this Friday, October the thirty-first, at five PM. Absentee ballots can be issued in person until Monday, November third, at four PM. So the differentiation between that absentee ballots can be issued and mailed this Friday, and then only issued in person until Monday, November third. All absentee ballots must be turned in by Tuesday, November the fourth, by eight PM, at the clerk's office or a drop box, that's the regular election day. Also, on Tuesday, November the fourth, you can vote at your regular polling place from seven AM until eight PM. We also have early voting all this week from, let's see, eight thirty until four thirty, except for this, this Wednesday, from twelve noon until eight o'clock. We also have early voting this Saturday and Sunday from eight thirty until four thirty. On a note about spoiling ballots, ballots that have been turned in cannot be spoiled to change a vote. And that's all that I have today for my announcements.
I'll just add, oh, thank you, and I'll just add, there's a number of polling location changes. Please check out the city clerk's portion of the Southfield website for your specific change. But letters were mailed out to all affected voters as well.
Yes, or they can call the office at two four eight seven nine six five one five zero.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one question. Can, can the public come and obtain an absentee ballot if they don't want to do early voting on November first? It's a Saturday?
Yes, we'll be open.
Till two o'clock?
Pardon me, we'll be open from eight until four thirty on Saturday, November the first.
Okay, because I thought it was, I thought the, two o'clock was a deadline to obtain an absentee ballot.
No, I haven't heard that, not on Saturday, November the first, no, I haven't heard.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. We will now move to the room for our closed session. Thank you.